It's Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to call to order a regular session of the City Council in Redondo Beach.
Councilmember Narenheim.
Here.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember MD.
Here.
Mayor Brand.
Here. Let's all rise, salute the flag, and take a moment of silence. Okay, ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the public.
For which it is.
And one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, folks. There we go. First up on our agenda, I guess we'll do announcements. Councilmember Narenheim, do you have any announcements?
Uh, yeah, I do. Let me get my stuff going here. So I really want to thank everyone for a great, uh, yesterday we had MLK, we had a great celebration yesterday with a video. And I want to thank the Police Department for doing a great job for taking the, uh, the horns and making things happen with a fantastic video. Uh, but I will say that the last week you're giving me great pause and deep concern for things that are happening. Uh, you know, again, in this time that we live in this community with, uh, at a national level with such, such great devices enough here in this, in this community, uh, we don't need people that are suing individuals, specifically the mayor and myself, and, uh, you know, perjuring themselves on videos, uh, talking about coming together as a community. And Joe, I'd like to know from you, Joe, uh, what, uh, you know, we could talk about this in more detail tomorrow, but I'd like to know from you as to who's responsible and why, why you would allow videos like this to be on the website. You know, we're, Mayor Brandon and I are going to be defending our appeals next week, Tuesday at one o'clock in the afternoon. And, uh, you know, Mayor Brandon's fighting for his life, we're fighting for our financial future, futures, and, and you're allowing, uh, people like, uh, who are defending, who are assaulting us legally in the system, legal system with, with baseless lawsuits. So I have great concern, uh, with that kind of allowance of using of city, uh, city websites, city resources to let people move forward on such a great commemorative day. Uh, so Joe, we'll talk about that more tomorrow. Uh, I have concerns on that tomorrow. Uh, we can talk about that tomorrow. Uh, but, uh, yeah, other than that, I think it was a great video. Uh, I really want to thank everyone for, put, put everything together. And, uh, you know, we have vaccines coming out. Everyone that has, uh, is sixty-five years or older, LA County now will allow, uh, people sixty-five years and older to, uh, to get a vaccine, get, get a, uh, at least get a appointment for a vaccine. So we'll make that announcement, and we'll be talking about more of that later in the night. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lowenstein.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Brand. Uh, I too enjoyed the MLK video yesterday. It was well put together, so thank you, uh, police for doing so. Um, and also, we had a great, uh, community meeting last week, just District Two, uh, for January, and I'm planning on one for February, so thank you very much, and that's it.
Okay, Councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, uh, my community meeting is gonna be this Thursday evening from six to seven thirty PM on Zoom. Uh, Chief Kaufman will be my guest, and, uh, we'll be discussing public safety, crime stats, uh, and just addressing the, the general concerns that a lot of people have, uh, especially things that have kind of upticked during COVID. Um, and, uh, and then also just wanted to, uh, to let everyone know that, uh, I, I spoke at the SCAG, uh, meeting last week where they were reviewing our appeal, uh, our RENA appeal. Uh, our staff did an excellent job. Um, I was sorry that I didn't see more council members speaking there. Um, uh, but, uh, staff did a great job, and I, and I just want to point out that, uh, there was a little hesitancy on, they, they were basically not approving anybody's appeal throughout the entire, uh, morning. Uh, but, uh, when they got to ours, there was a little bit of a hiccup, and some people kind of paused and, and took note. I think Brandy and Sean really put together a compelling presentation. Um, and, uh, and they did, uh, promise that they would actually start addressing some of the main issues that we brought up as it relates to, uh, the, uh, the formula that they use and the allocations. And then, uh, and then finally, I'll just mention that Congressman Lou had a meeting today discussing, uh, uh, the VA, uh, in West LA and what they're trying to do, and this is something he's been working on since two thousand and sixteen, uh, but, uh, specifically related to housing veterans and the project and the multiple phases, and, uh, and so it's just good to see it really starting to come to fruition, and I would imagine with a, uh, a new administration, we may actually see things get done sooner there. So, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Hi, thanks. Um, Noah, I just want to say thank you to the Public Works team. Uh, they are doing a terrific job. We had a couple of issues that they've been able to take care of in our local neighborhoods, and, uh, again, just hats off to those folks for doing a great job. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Brandy.
I want to just echo what, um, Christian said about the appeals meeting. I was surprised that we were the only city that they even considered. They didn't even want to have conversation with any other city. Um, they just said, can we just go straight to the vote on this so it doesn't take forever? But with us, they stopped and they paused, and there were a few slides that, um, that Brandy, uh, and, um, sorry, and, uh, they put together, yeah, Sean, thank you. Sean put together that they did a, uh, that really made everybody pause and, and root for us. Not enough for them to give us our four hundred unit reduction, but it was enough to where they at least felt, we at least felt heard. Um, and that, that was great. And, and like, uh, Neil said, the main topic of conversation is that the vaccines are open to sixty-five and older. That's exciting, and I'm looking forward to hearing the report later on today. And, um, so there's lots of exciting things in this meeting tonight that I'm looking forward to, including the Manhattan Beach Boulevard redo.
Great, you. Um, just to clear up for those watching that don't know what SCAG arena are, uh, it's always, uh, you know, kind of in the weeds for everybody. I, first off, I wish, I wish I would have known about the meeting. I certainly would have made an effort to be there. I really didn't know that we had staff giving a presentation to SCAG and that, you know, it was an opportunity for us to get your case. So I would have very much would have liked to have known about that, but, um, not blaming anybody. I just would tell you, I would have been there. So anyway, um, SCAG is Southern California Association of Governments. RENA is our recent Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Ultimately, this is all coming from the state, uh, housing and community development, and really Governor Newsom, Senate Pro Tim, Tony Atkins, Scott Weiner, State Senator, who's been driving all this legislation to force housing, uh, everywhere all over the state, and they're stripping local control. We're gonna talk about that later in the meeting. Uh, the only thing, you know, you can, you need to show up to these SCAG things, and I know that dog's name, but I sure wish I could pet it. Laura, anyway, um, what's going on? And we've got to continue to work hard. It's been going on for years. Is there stripping our ability to control how much development there is in, in Redondo Beach? And the state's doing it. Uh, they're blaming local community for their perceived housing shortage when really what we have is an affordability crisis. So we'll talk about this all later, uh, to what, uh, Councilmember Horvath and MD are talking about those, how the state is trying to force these, these additional, uh, units on Redondo Beach, and they were gonna punish us. And Governor Newsom said in his budget, um, speech the other day that they're gonna start monitoring our planning commission meetings. They're gonna start monitoring council meetings to make sure we're approving all these projects with, with, you know, no contingencies. It's amazing. It's absolutely amazing. So I'll get off my high horse about that. But it also tees in to what, uh, Congressman Lou had today. We had a discussion, and Councilmember Horvath was on it, and there were a lot of local elected officials, uh, at all levels of government. I saw Representative Maxine Waters was on the call. Um, a lot of, uh, state, uh, Congress, other congressional reps, state senators, State Assemblymember Almar Succi was on the call, and they were talking about the Veterans Administration Facility in West LA, just across from UCLA, across the four oh five, where they're trying to build housing for our homeless veterans, of which there are four thousand in Los Angeles County. Now, you would think the state would fund something like that, wouldn't you? Doesn't that make a lot of sense to, you know, get the county, the state, and the Fed all together to help fund something like this? And then the, Ted Lewis done a fantastic job bringing everybody, got, got everybody on the call. And, and what was one of the major impediments to funding to this project? And they're gonna build thousands of units for these homeless veterans. The state housing and community development. They wouldn't provide the funding because it wasn't dense enough, and it wasn't close enough to transit. So we'll just continue to let our veterans sleep on the streets until they decide to make it more dense. And this is the kind of craziness coming from Sacramento, folks.
They're ignoring the fact that those veterans would be right next to all the services they need.
Yeah, no, they don't care. It's, it's not, it's not in their matrix, right? It's, it's not a box in their matrix for them to check and put us, put that at the top of the list. So, uh, State Senator Stern was on the call, somebody remember Almar Succi's on the call. I brought that up, and, and Senator Stern right away was, uh, saying, yeah, what is going on with HCD? So maybe, maybe they'll break loose some funds on that. So, um, and yeah, the vaccines are here, fantastic. We're gonna hear more about that later. Uh, BCT's Health District is gonna help you work through the maze of that, and they're gonna talk about that if you're not on, because it's probably gonna be much later. Dial their phone number, three one oh, three seven four, three four two six, extension two five six. And if you're over sixty-five, they will walk you through the maze of where to go get a vaccine. So again, that number is three one oh, three seven four, three four two six, extension two five six. BCT's Health District is manning that number seven days a week. So, um, uh, pass that around, and, uh, you're gonna be hearing plenty about the county vaccinating people over sixty-five. They had a long conversation with Janice Hahn about this, and they've done a bit of a change in their priority, that they want to get people over sixty-five now, because those are the ones that are getting sick, those are the ones that are filling up the hospital, there's the ones that are dying. So they just kind of come to the conclusion, we're going straight to who's getting sick and who's filling up the hospitals after they've done the frontline people. And lastly, as to Councilmembers in the Narenheims concerned about the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration, which was fantastic, and again, thank you to Police Foundation, the Police Community Engagement Board. I really want to thank them for their efforts and, and taking the lead on this for two years in a row. It's a fantastic event. I was honored to be part of it, but it gave me a very sour taste when at the end, who appears? Arnett Travis. Yeah, it's, her name's Arnett Travis, Councilmember Narenheim. That's who appeared at the end of the video, who's the one personally suing me and Councilmember Narenheim, uh, on behalf of the developers of the Center Cal Mall project that failed. And, um, she lied to the community, she lied to the court, and, um, you know, there she is at the Martin Luther King Junior Ceremony, calling for unity and, 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 you know, doing away with divisiveness in the community while she lies to the community and, and then sues us personally and, and lies to the, lies to, uh, you know, the court. I mean, it's just outrageous that that appeared at the end. So, yeah, Joe, it'd be interesting to know who, um, who was responsible for that, if they knew that, uh, her, what, what she's up to. And we are going to appeals court, where it's an oral arguments in appeals court next week. Yeah, so they owe our attorneys right now over a million dollars. A judge threw the book at them, called them, uh, called them, um, shill for a sham lawsuit. So we'll see if it holds up in appeals court, but that's what Councilmember Narenheim was talking about, and I was very concerned that appeared on the city website. Burnishing, burnishing her sullied reputation on city resources is not something the mayor and the council member are interested in. Otherwise, great event. So, yeah, we'll find out. Anyway, with that, a lot of announcements, uh, we got a lot of them on the agenda, as Councilmember MD said, so let's, uh, let's get to it. Uh, next up are, um, I guess we'll do a special meeting of the successor agency. Oh, I'm sorry, we do approval of order of agenda first.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Uh, motion by Councilmember Horvath, second by Councilmember Grant. Any objections to the order of agenda? Okay, uh, with that, we will move on to the special meeting of successor, successor agency. Uh, so I would like to call to order, uh, special meeting of successor, successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Member Narenheim.
Here.
Member Lowenstein.
Here.
Member Horvath.
Here.
Member Grant.
Here.
Member MD.
Here.
Chairman Brand.
Here, thank you. Um, okay, approval, order of agenda. Is there any objection to the order of agenda? Okay, hearing none, so ordered. Uh, blue folder items, are there any blue folder items?
No mayor, no blue folder items.
Okay, consent calendar. There are four items on the consent calendar. Anybody can pull any item, public can comment on any item on the consent calendar. Are there any, uh, public, uh, comments on the consent calendar for the successor agency?
No, not at this time for either one.
Any, uh, board members like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Okay, I entertain motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Then you have a second by Councilmember Grant, motion by Councilmember Horvath. Um, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim.
Hi.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Hi.
Councilmember Horvath.
Hi.
Councilmember Grant.
Hi.
And Councilmember MD.
Hi.
Okay, do you need to read that resolution?
Yes, uh, Mayor, adopt by title only, resolution number S-A dash twenty-one oh one dash oh one, a resolution of the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Redondo Beach, California, approving and adopting a recognized obligation payment schedule pursuant to California Health and Safety Code Section three four one one, three four one seven seven L. I think it's I, I'm sorry, I, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, public participation on non-agenda items. Again, this is for the successor agency. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items for the successor agency?
No public comments for this one, Mayor.
Okay, no ex parte, public carrying old business, new business. Any referrals to staff? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No adjournment.
Second.
Um, motion by, was that Councilmember Lowenstein?
Yes.
And seconded by Councilmember.
Grant.
Grant, okay. Any, uh, any objections to adjourn? Okay, so ordered. Thank you. Next up, blue folder, well, regular council meeting. Uh, I'll ask for a roll call returning to the regular council meeting. Roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Narenheim.
Here.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Member MD.
Here.
Mayor Brand.
Here, thank you, Eleanor. Uh, blue folder, I know we have some blue folder items to add.
Yes, uh, we have, um, public comments related to H eleven. Um, the resolution number CC one two one oh one dash oh two, um, is provided for you on H thirteen. For H fifteen, interim county use agreement isn't, um, is included, uh, J one, what, public comments, eleven one, public comments and PowerPoint presentation, and two, public comments, PowerPoint presentation, and bike facility concept to be of design exhibits. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion to add those to the record? Motion to add those items?
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Lowenstein, second by Councilmember Horvath. Any objections? Okay, so ordered. Next up's our consent calendar. Tonight, we have fifteen items on the consent, consent calendar. We will, uh, approve these all at once, or any council member can pull any item. Uh, public can comment on any item, has to pull any item, and, uh, we'll go from there. Uh, first off, Councilmember, uh, Narenheim, do you have any items you want to pull?
I have no items to pull, thank you.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Horvath.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
No, thank you.
And Councilmember MD.
Oh, thank you.
I wanted to pull just for a very short discussion, item H thirteen, just so people understand what's going on with the new Mitsubishi dealer at the corner of Pacifico Highway and under me. So are there any public comments on any consent calendar item other than H thirteen?
Oh, let's see, let me check. See anything for, um, H's? Okay, so no for, um, either one. No he comments or no, um, attendees.
Okay, is there a motion to approve a consent calendar other than item H thirteen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion, uh, Councilmember Horvath, second by Councilmember Grant. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim.
Hi.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Hi.
Councilmember Horvath.
Hi.
Councilmember Grant.
Hi.
And Councilmember MD.
Hi.
Okay, Mayor, I need to read, uh, H six, adopt by title only, resolution number CC dash two one oh one dash oh eight, a resolution city council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing properties to cancer support community Redondo Beach, a California five oh one C three nonprofit corporation. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Eleanor. Item H thirteen is interesting, uh, because, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, or anybody else. We don't own the property. We used to own the property, a portion of it, and we sold it, the remaining portion, I believe, to Hermosa Beach some time ago.
Well, this site has been privately owned, both jointly by, part of it's in Hermosa Beach, part of it's is Redondo Beach. Uh, there was a brief time where we had the opportunity to buy the site. Uh, we opted not to do that. Uh, the prior, uh, the prior dealership was a Land, Land Rover dealership. There was a sales tax sharing arrangement for that site. Uh, that dealership closed, the site was empty for some time. There's a Mitsubishi dealership up at the site now. Basically, forty-seven percent of the land is owned by Hermosa Beach, fifty-three percent is owned by Redondo Beach. Uh, every time they sell a vehicle or have a taxable sale, what this agreement does is it basically splits or apportions the sales tax to fifty-three percent to Redondo, forty-seven to Hermosa. That's what this agreement memorializes. We worked with Hermosa and the city attorney's office to, of both departments to put, uh, this together. So, um, that, that's the, the item in a nutshell.
Yeah, no, thank you, Joe. You know, to really get too deep into it, I just wanted to explain to everybody, uh, the status of that, that it is owned, uh, by Hermosa Beach and Redondo Beach, and, um, I don't remember the details of why we didn't buy it. I think it was too expensive. But, uh, we get about half the sales tax revenue from that. So it's been closed for some time. It was a Land Rover dealer, I believe, and, um, yeah, depending on how they do, it could be a huge sales tax generator for us. There you go. That was kind of it. I just thought I'd take a moment to explain it to everyone. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Narenheim. Um, are there any public comments about this, H thirteen?
No comments.
Okay. No comments?
No comments.
Okay, um, I guess I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim.
Hi.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Hi.
Councilmember Horvath.
Hi.
Councilmember Grant.
Hi.
And Councilmember.
Hi.
Okay, so that's.
I need to read the H thirteen, adopt by title only, resolution number CC dash two one oh one dash oh one twelve, a resolution city council of Redondo Beach, California, approving a local sales tax revenue sharing agreement and a sales tax sharing implementation agreement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, public participation on non-agenda items. This is the opportunity for the public to comment on any item that is not on the agenda. And we've got three minutes, and it's normally limited to thirty minutes, unless there's an exception. So, uh, with that, I will, uh, ask city clerk, do we have any public comments for non-agenda items? Again, this is for any items that are not already on the agenda.
Correct. So, uh, we have Holly Osborne.
Go ahead, Holly.
Okay, let's see. I have a, oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and staff. Um, I have attended every RENA appeals meeting thus far, and I want to summarize the feelings there because I think it may significantly impact the G-PAC, and I don't want the city to do any premature upzoning to accommodate our large RENA. Here's the situation. Appeals Board has denied, denied, and denied every appeal that has been presented to them, as you reported. However, this has often been done with great reluctance because they believe, the board members believe their hands are tied. There were papers that report votes are six zero or sometimes five one, but it does not indicate how many of those votes are cast with great reluctance. They are operating under constraints that are very narrow set of guidelines for which they can appeal, and also the total RENA number is one point three four million, and if they reduce somewhere, they have to increase somewhere else. However, they have seen the impact of this number, and in the words of one of the six board members, quote, "We are being forced to design a city and forced to do it badly," end quote. They believe that the smaller RENA numbers indicated by the Embarcadero report are more accurate, and they're going to go to HCD sometimes after the appeal process is over to discuss this. The appeals were supposed to be over this Friday, but they are running behind, so they might have to schedule another session. So this Friday, and then maybe Monday, and I'm good, I'm interrupting my speech right here, because Huntington Beach appealed on one of the same grounds we did with their high-quality transit area, and they stopped, and they're coming back to, on Friday, to reconsider that, and, uh, they said, gee, if we do this, we might have to, we go back to other people that appealed on this grounds, and that's one of the grounds we interrupted on, we appealed on, and now I'm gonna go over. Um, um, you'll just have to shut me up when you're not organizing. Okay, so anyway, they're going to discuss what they're gonna do after the, they finish the appeals. Meanwhile, the SCAG president, Mitch Richardson, has said he will convene a closed session on litigation of the same issue, meaning the overall one point three four million number being too big. I don't know when this is, when that is. The reason I am bringing up, Redondo RENA is two four eight three, which is pretty big. It was so big that it would effectively nullify what the G-PAC did were to stand. But if they do somehow negotiate a total number that's small than one point three, three, four million in line with the Embarcadero report, our number could be one half that of two forty-three. So we do not want to prematurely upzone an area that we do not have to. And you know what? I think I'm just gonna stop right there, okay?
Well, thank you, Holly. I appreciate you staying up on that, really, really do. Thanks for coming on and updating us. Okay, any more comments under public participation on their non-agenda items?
Yeah, I have, uh, Zain Obashi Junior. There we go.
Good evening, uh, City Council and Mr. Mayor. I wanted to speak about a subject called truth decay. Um, Councilmember Laura MD is, uh, highly respected by Redondo Beach residents because she's so communicative. She stays in touch with residents, listens to them, and tells them what's going on. But this week, she released a, uh, post on our website called "It's Election Season," in which she, as leader and city council member, engaged in intentional dishonesty that contributes to truth decay. She said that I fully, that I funded the failed recall campaign against John Grant. After a cease and desist letter from me, she changed it to I partially funded. That, uh, she said that John Grant had the threat of a recall campaign waged against him because he voted not to pursue a contract with LA County Fire. Nothing could be more further from the truth, Councilmember MD, and you know that. The recall was waged against Councilmember Grant because he voted against a study to find out what could we benefit. to find out what could we benefit from county services? What would it cost? And to understand that the liabilities we would have for the long term in our city and if we were to go to county. Nobody, everybody in Redondo would love to keep our Redondo Beach Fire, including myself. But you, center cal cronies, are not doing anything to raise revenue. In fact, uh, through, through means other than taxing the residents or allowing mega projects to come through. In fact, I heard this week that you said to a resident, "None of these funding problems would be an issue if Center Cal could have built the mall." The mall that would be shut down right now because the movie theater wouldn't be allowed to operate. So, uh, folks, while you may trust some of these leaders because they keep in touch with you often, be sure you get the facts. I'm Zain Obaji, I'm running for city council against Mr. Grant, who voted against a study of our essential fire services. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
I have someone that signed up, but they're not in yet. So we have one comment on ecomments. So Vicki, can you go ahead and, um, read that, please?
I, yes, this is submitted by Maggie Healy. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. In 2018, Councilman Nels Narrenheim demanded that the city pay for his assaulted and vandalized, after, excuse me, after he assaulted and vandalized a Riviera building restaurant. Narrenheim's defense failed last year because such shameful behavior is indefensible. Why hasn't he been held accountable? The coast, the cost to Redondo Beach residents was probably close to $100,000 or more for his defense. Money we sorely need to maintain city programs. Even worse is the long-term cost of the bad faith he created with the Redondo Beach business community. Redondo Beach residents should not have to pay for Narrenheim's outrageous conduct. The mayor and council have a fiduciary duty to hold Councilman Narrenheim accountable by making him reimburse the city for his defense costs. Respectfully submitted, Maggie Healy, District One. That concludes, uh, ecomments.
Okay, uh, Mayor, I have, uh, one more on, um, Zoom.
Go ahead.
Eleanor.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, uh, apologies for the late arrival. Uh, we had power go out earlier and again, uh, tonight. So we just got power back on again. Uh, they have Edison working in the trees. Um, Mayor and Council, thank you, uh, and good evening. Uh, on the national stage right now, we have something called, uh, the big lie about the election. Uh, the Rand Institute calls this, uh, truth decay. And we have truth decay in the city of Redondo Beach. And some of the purveyors of the truth decay are sitting on council, and some of them are members of the community. Uh, not the truth decay side, but just the mistakes. Uh, Councilmember MD mentioned in the discussion about the waterfront amenities last week about the sport fishing pier, and, uh, that there wasn't support in the community for it. Um, uh, remember, it was, uh, brought back, well, it was originally eliminated from the Center Cal project. And then in the December 2018, um, article in the Log Newspaper, it talked about a survey of residents supporting all the amenities surrounding the fishing pier. So the fishing pier is something that the residents have been surveyed and supported in the past and likely still do. Uh, so I, I don't think that there's a doubt about that. Uh, Councilmember Horvath, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, on social media, uh, took to defending the idea that, uh, Measure C put Ruby's out of business in the harbor. Despite the fact that there was a newspaper article where the owner said, uh, it was a result of COVID and the challenges associated with that. And also despite the fact that Ruby's has a location in Palos Verdes, and I don't think that Measure C put Ruby's in Palos Verdes out of business. So, uh, this level of truth decay is, is problematic when you have elected officials who are, um, I wouldn't say manipulating the truth, but not giving the whole truth about things. Uh, there's, uh, members of the community that are running for election, uh, last week in this space, talked about how, uh, no developer in the harbor because of Measure C. Well, somebody just bought the AES site for what's likely 200-plus million dollars, and then took on a number of leases on the fishing pier. So it doesn't seem likely that that's an accurate statement. And then there's this thing about Measure C overall. One of you mentioned to me one time that you wish that, uh, we would stop bringing up Center Cal and Measure C. And the reason that we keep bringing it up is because of all this misinformation that still stays out there that's not corrected. So you've got somebody out there talking about how Measure C killed the Center Cal project, when in fact, in the May meeting of this, uh, Coastal Commission, they came up with a number of substantial issues where the project was deficient for Measure G, our local coastal plan. It was not compliant. And despite given many opportunities in hiring lobbyists, Center Cal never corrected or attempted to correct all the problems with the substantial issues and deficiencies. Measure G was ruled not to apply to the Center Cal project. Thank you, I apologize for going a bit over.
Okay, any more, Eleanor?
That's it.
All right. Well, we're having some fun now. Next step is a public hearing, but let's start with ex parte communications. This is a hearing, uh, related to, um, acquire certain real property interests from 1700 Artesia Boulevard. Councilmember Narrenheim, do you have any ex parte communication?
Before that starts, could you just remind, Ma- Mayor Brand, can I ask you to remind everybody that we're not, none of us are allowed to respond to public comments, no matter what's said?
Yeah, you know, we all get a, get a, people make a bunch of accusations under non-agenda items. Uh, part of the Brown Act is we are not allowed to discuss non-agenda items because it was non-agendized. So we cannot get into a discussion, we're not, we don't even defend ourselves, we don't counter things, we don't correct anybody. Uh, very rarely do we comment at all under non-agenda items. Let's just, some simple question like, you know, the light went out on my street, can you do it? We can just ask staff to look, look, you know, contact, or something like that. Otherwise, we cannot comment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Councilmember Narrenheim, do you have any ex parte communications on this item?
I have no, uh, ex parte communications on this item, thank you.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
I do not, as well.
Councilmember Horvath?
Uh, staff only.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Grant?
Actually, uh, I spoke with, uh, Councilman Horvath, and I have spoken with staff, and then I had a brief conversation with, uh, Mr. Madani and Nicole Madani's daughter.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember MD?
Just when we spoke about it in closed session, no. So staff.
Okay. Yeah, I had a brief conversation with staff, um, long, long, long before this was ever going to be on the agenda tonight. I spoke with the property owner, uh, and he commented to me was that that right turn lane wasn't necessary to, uh, free up traffic. So, um, with that, we'll move on to, uh, the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion by Councilmember Horvath, seconded by Councilmember Grant. Are there any objections to opening the public hearing? Okay, hearing no objections. With that, we'll move on with the report from our staff, and I take it, uh, our Director of Public Works, um, Ted Simone, are you going to lead this, or?
I am, thank you, Your Honor. And before I lead into Andy's presentation, I did want to say we received some materials, or I think the city clerk's office has received some material from Mr. Madani's attorneys. Um, so we would like to see if the council could accept that as a receiving file, and then have the city clerk disseminate that information to you.
Okay, is there a motion receiving file on those items?
Motion receiving file?
Second.
Okay, uh, motion by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Horvath. Are there any objections to receiving? Filing it, okay, uh, with no objections, so ordered.
Great, thank you, Your Honor. With that, um, as you mentioned, this is a long-term project. It has been on our CIP books since 2011. Uh, Andy's going to give you a brief presentation on that. And just to let you know, we're also joined by Gina Danner, our outside attorney from, uh, RWG, Richard Swatson Gershon. Uh, she may be providing some additional insight on the legal aspects of this project. Um, Andy? You're still muted?
And while Andy's unmuting himself, can I just give, uh, uh, legal fees are paid, can be paid for out of transportation fees, it's totally reimbursable. And, uh, Regina is an expert in eminent domain. In fact, she's the, uh, Assistant Chair of the, uh, eminent domain practice at Richard Watson. So since none of this is being paid by, um, um, general funds, uh, we made a decision to have her handle it. She'll, she'll be answering any questions, um, that you may have on this process.
Great, thank you, Frank.
All right, thank you, good evening, uh, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, as Ted mentioned, tonight is, uh, a public hearing to consider a resolution of necessity to acquire real property interest at 1700 Artesia Boulevard. Uh, let me share my screen with you. Okay. Um, so a little, uh, background on the project. Uh, this project has been in development for a number, actually several decades now. In 2003, 2007, and 2009, the city prepared, uh, studies, uh, something called a project study report equivalent to discuss the need for the project in order to obtain grant funding. In January of 2011, the city council approved the project in a list of six Measure R projects for the city as part of an early action plan being solicited by the South Bay Cog in response to the Measure R Regional Project Grant Program. Grant funding was awarded as part of the Measure R Regional Project Program later that year and added to the city's, uh, FY 2011, 2012 CIP program. Uh, design work was commenced at that point and advanced to a point where, uh, exact configurations of the needed private property was determined. Uh, and as I show here on the slide, uh, the project requires, uh, eighteen, just over 1,800 square feet of private property, uh, as a fee acquisition and then a temporary use, temporary construction easement use, uh, of about 1,436 square feet on the same property. Uh, this slide just shows, uh, overview of the project design. North is to the, uh, right on this page. Uh, and you'll see this light gray color here represents the new right-hand turn lane for the project. It's a dedicated right turn lane, uh, meant to improve or reduce the delays experienced by northbound traffic uh, in the morning and afternoon peak hours. Uh, immediately adjacent to it would be, uh, a new sidewalk. And then there's a lighter gray strip here that represents the temporary construction easement. Uh, it's probably shown a little bit better on this next slide. This is an aerial view of the subject property at 1700 Artesia Boulevard. Uh, north is up in this drawing. Uh, the parcel boundary is shown in this blue line. It's, uh, just about an acre and a quarter in size. The fee acquisition area is outlined in red along the western strip of the property. It's, uh, approximately 10 feet wide for most of it. Um, total area, again, about 1,813 square feet. And then this red and white hatched area represents the, uh, temporary construction easement, which is, uh, would be returned to full use of the owner since the project was finished with construction. Uh, you can see from the overhand, uh, overhead view here that, uh, the pump island, uh, located right here, uh, would be, not be interfered with, uh, fully accessible during the construction period as well the car wash, uh, the oil change area and the mini mart and the other pump island, uh, here on the site. Uh, design team took operational issues, uh, of the station into account with its design. This template shows the way a tanker truck delivering fuel would enter the property and get to the underground storage tank, a fill location, which is right over here, just to the north of this pump island. Um, the, uh, property owner requested, uh, information about this specifically, how that would have any concerns that that would not be able to happen. We provided this to demonstrate, uh, that it would not be a problem for, uh, the turning movements of the delivery trucks. Um, the temporary construction easement does cross a couple of driveways, uh, but our, uh, method in this type of situation is that we would require our contractor to keep those driveways open as, uh, often as possible and only close them when it was necessary for construction. For instance, of the sidewalk or the driveway aprons, uh, immediate in front. So, uh, there are several points of access to this property. There's a driveway here at the south end of the property along our aviation. There's another one just north of that, a third one up here at the corner, and then at least one on Artesia, uh, further down by the oil change, there's access to the property. There's also access through the private property opening here, uh, at the restaurant site next door. Justification for the project is supported, uh, by a number of things. It's consistency with the circulation element of the general plan regarding improvements to traffic circulation and, uh, the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, this project is also listed as a Priority One project in the South Bay Cog's Goods Movement Study. The initial project study reports, as well as more recent studies, underscore the need for the project. The intersection currently functions at a Level of Service F. LOS, as you know, is a measure of delays experienced at the inter- intersection, and in this case, heavy delays. Um, however, with this improvement, uh, in conjunction with the anticipated improvement on the opposite corner, which is being advanced by the city of Manhattan Beach, future delays are reduced by over 26 seconds in the morning peak and over 17 seconds in the evening peak, representing a 24% and 13 and a half percent improvement, respectively. Uh, there are additional modest improvements in, to the ratio of volume to capacity, which is a measure of uses compared to design thresholds. Uh, and these reductions in delays have the added benefit of reducing greenhouse gas emissions associated with idling and thus support another objective of the city's general plan.
Um, question, I'm sorry, Andy. Can you go back to that slide? On the, um, just to give people perspective, so a, a reduction of 26 seconds, how long is a, would someone be expected to wait at a light? For example, if there were no traffic whatsoever? How long, in other words, what's the cycle of a light?
Uh, I'm not, I didn't, I don't know the exact timing of this one. I'll give you a couple of minutes at most, depending on how big the intersection is. This is, uh, that LOS, uh, threshold to get to from F, letter grade F to letter grade E is 80 seconds. This AM peak reduces it from, to, to just about 82 seconds. We're just, just short of, just shy of a whole letter grade improvement. We're just, just short of, just shy of a whole letter grade improvement, but is it a 24-second improvement? Ted and Jean are both on. Do you guys happen to know the timing of this intersection? I don't.
I can assume, but Jean, do you have an exact information on it?
Not an exact. I'll talk my head.
That's okay. Thank you. I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get comparison.
Yeah, I will say, Councilwoman, typically on an arterial roadway like that, you're looking at a 90-second or a two-minute cycle. So you're right, it's going to be anywhere from a minute and a half to two minutes that a vehicle could wait from the beginning to the end of a particular cycle to come around back.
And just to add on, that's because it's an F intersection?
No, that's just the cycle length of the intersection. The F is really more relevant to either the number of vehicles that make it through on a capacity basis and/or the number of vehicles that are, and the time that it takes them to come through the intersection that gives it a level, a level of service designation. It doesn't have, it factors into the analysis of the delay calculation, but it's not derived by, based on the like, the intersection length or the cycle length of the intersection.
So what makes it an F intersection?
Jean, do you want to talk through that a little bit?
Sure. So typically, the level of service, by definition, level of service, it's, we're looking at throughput based on available geometry, number of vehicles that are making particular movements, the signal fading that's available, so we have thrus, protected left turns and things of that nature. And so the LOSF basically signifies that within a given amount of time, we're able to push through as many vehicles as we can to make the intersection as efficient as we possibly can. And the LOS basically states that, you know, there's a lot of vehicles there, and with increased vehicles or based on certain functions, they may go through additional delay. And so the LOS is basically saying that there is a significant amount of delay that vehicles and drivers are experiencing at this location based on the geometry of the roadway and the volumes that are going through there.
Well, I'm just trying to make it clear to the public. Level of service, LOS, grade of a F, level of service is the way intersections are graded, A through F. We all know A through F, right? We all went to school, we know what an A is, we know what an F is. And so intersections are graded the same way. And let me just ask, or maybe, no, Andrew, is this intersection an F intersection?
Currently, yes.
Yeah, thank you. So this is an F intersection, and we're looking to improve it. Anybody who drives it during rush hour in the morning would rate it an F. So we're doing what we can to improve it. I think that's what, bottom line, high level, what residents would want.
Thank you.
And these are typical analyses that are used. There are other benefits that aren't captured necessarily in these numerical analysis that we can talk about it if necessary. Let me jump forward now to the need for the resolution in particular. The development of the property at 1700 Artesia, the redevelopment, I should say, in mid-1990s is actually designed with a right-of-way dedication in mind. Staff had recommended to the applicant that that would be necessary as part of their CUP process and recommended that to the Planning Commission as one of its conditions of development. However, the Planning Commission chose to remove that condition, really on principle in that there was no project identified at the time or funding identified for a project at the time. So I think the quote was from the minutes, the city can just buy it when they're ready. And so although the point I'm trying to make is that the station has been designed to handle a project very much like this and shouldn't be impacted at all in its onsite operations. The city has made two good faith efforts to purchase the property from the owner after a fair market appraisal for the fee take area, the temporary construction easement lease area, and the impacted site improvements. The first time was in early 2017, and the property owner's attorney responded with questions about the need for the project. We didn't hear anything about a counteroffer or anything else. The city began to perceive that it was going to be necessary to do a acquisition through this kind of a resolution. And so we went back and looked at some other things. We did some additional studies. We, that took some time, so our appraisal had gotten stale, so we did a new appraisal. We came back and made a new offer in the fall of 2022 and heard from the property owner's attorney that they were going to do their own appraisal for comparison purposes. And then when we issued a notice about tonight's hearing, we got a letter objecting to the resolution, which was attached to your staff report and some additional traffic studies provided by a traffic engineer that they hired. So that's where we stand on the need for the resolution. Let me just check my notes, make sure I get through everything here. Oh yeah, despite, just despite all that, we, the offer still stands if the property owner was willing to go enter into negotiations for the price, but staff feels it's necessary to proceed with the resolution based on a non-response in that regard to acquire the property.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Yeah. One or two more, if you don't mind. Certain are required, and this is kind of the important legal stuff, and I'll invite Gina in here in a second, but certain findings are required to be made by the council before the resolution can be adopted. Staff believes it's provided evidence in tonight's testimony and the administrative report to support these findings. Staff has also considered the objections made by the property owner's counsel and traffic engineer and believes them in no way to diminish the evidence provided in support of these findings. And so now I'll hand it off to Gina, outside counsel for the city, who can go into details about the required findings and the staff recommendations that were spelled out in the administrative report. Gina.
I think she's having some audio issues. I'm asking for her to unmute, but it's not working.
Is there a way for her to call in?
Yeah, she could, she can call in through her phone. I thought that's what she was using, because I think she was having problems with her computer. It looks like it's not working.
Is the number in?
The number that's in that email that was sent to everyone, it's in there.
Gina, perhaps if you can hear us, you can just call in.
She is calling in. There's a way to unmute from a phone, though. It's like star six or something.
Oh, right. Star six, if you're on a phone, correct.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. Sorry.
I didn't realize.
And I'll leave this screen up, Gina, if you need it, or I can, I can take it down.
Yeah, so star six to mute and star six to come on, so just so you know. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. In order to adopt a resolution necessity, the city council has to make four findings. The council has to find that the public interest and necessity require the project, that the project is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, that the subject property interests described in the resolution necessity are necessary for the project, and that the city has made the offer required by Government Code Section 7267.2 to the property owner. In order, we have provided the city council with an agenda report that has the facts that support each of those findings. And that the agenda report is included as, is incorporated as part of the record. We also, so having all the facts set forth in the agenda report, we would ask that the city council consider the resolution, receive the agenda report, take any public testimony, consider all evidence, and determine whether or not to adopt the proposed resolution necessity. In order to adopt the resolution, it requires a four-fifth vote of the city council. And if the council adopts the proposed resolution, we ask the council authorize the city attorney's office to file and prosecute eminent domain proceedings.
So is that it, Andy?
Yes, that concludes our prepared comments, certainly available for questions and throughout through the hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Not really seen any hands up yet. I'm just kind of re-summarize it for everybody. The phrase eminent domain, it was not used, I don't believe, but I think this is what this is. And it's for the public good. Done an appraisal, minimizing harm to the property owner and all the other findings that were there. So, yeah, not really seeing any hands up. If any questions or any motion, you could put back up your recommendation of what we have to do tonight, Andy, that might be very helpful.
So we have the public also.
The property owner's counsel has, part of their objection letter was a request to speak at tonight's event, and I believe they're prepared to.
Write to that and let the property owner speak. So are they available?
So I don't know who's the property owner, if you want me to have that, or could we have?
Glenn Block there, is Glenn?
Yeah, that's, that's who it is. He's the attorney representing the Madonis, yes.
Okay, great. So.
Great.
I'll have him, okay. Glenn Block, you're unmuted.
Hi, this is Glenn Block. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear, Mr. Block.
Great. Would you mind taking down the PowerPoint?
No, no problem at all. Go ahead, take that down for now, Andrew.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council members. We appreciate your time this evening. My name is Glenn Block. I'm with California Eminent Domain Law Group. We are the law firm representing Mr. and Mrs. Mike and Florence Madonie. Mr. and Mrs. Madonie are the owners of the property at 1700 Artesia Boulevard. They also own and operate the Shell gas station business there. I'm here tonight with Mr. and Mrs. Madonie, as well as Brian Stevenson, an expert traffic engineer with Rick Engineering. Mr. Stevenson will present his analysis and findings after I present an introduction. The, I want to make sure that the council has received my January 5, 2021 letter, as well as the attachments. And Mr. Stevenson, we submitted Mr. Stevenson's PowerPoint presentation this afternoon. So I just want to make sure all of that information has been received into the council file.
Did we submit all those?
Yes. The January 5 letter was attached to the staff report, and the other item was the one that you received and filed at the beginning of this item.
Is that what you're referring to, Mr. Block?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as I mentioned, Mr. and Mrs. Madonie are the owners of the property at 1700 Artesia Boulevard. They have owned the business since 1991, and they have owned the property since 1995. When we talk about the traffic at this intersection, there's one person who has been studying the traffic at this intersection for more than 30 years. That's Mr. Madonie. Mike Madonie is at the property every day, morning, afternoon, observing the traffic. So he is intimately familiar with the situation. As, as staff indicated before, Mr. Madonie has voiced his objection to this project as it's not needed. That, that his objection has been expressed recently, over the past few years, as the city has proceeded with planning for this project. And Mr. Madonie expressed his objection back in 1997, when his redevelopment plans.
Is there, excuse me, is there a motion to extend?
Motion to.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate.
We had to extend you beyond the normal three minutes. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. So as I was saying, Mr. Madonie objected to this project as it was contemplated back in 1997, when the Planning Commission was considering the redevelopment plans for the property, for the station. Present, tonight, before the council is a resolution of necessity to authorize the city's taking the involuntary sale or taking of the property from the Madonis, exercising its power of eminent domain. Obviously, this council is, is well aware of the sanctity of that power, that ultimate power of eminent domain that it has, and to exercise that power judiciously and only when absolutely necessary. Tonight, the city, in consideration of the resolution and necessity, can only adopt this resolution if it makes each and all of the four required findings and in determining that substantial evidence supports each of those findings. Although Mr. and Mrs. Madonie dispute each of the four findings to varying degrees, I'm going to focus on two of the four findings. Mr. and Mrs. Madonie object to the proposed resolution of necessity on the grounds that the public interest and necessity do not require the project because it will not provide a meaningful improvement to the intersection. And Mr. and Mrs. Madonie object to the proposed resolution of necessity on the ground that the project is not planned or located in the manner most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury, because there's a reasonable alternative to this project as presented by Rick Engineering and Brian Stevenson that would accomplish a greater improvement to this intersection without any private injury. As I mentioned, the city, the council can only adopt the resolution if it makes all four of the required findings, and it must, those findings must be supported by substantial evidence. The city's adoption of a resolution of necessity in the absence of substantial evidence would constitute a gross abuse of discretion and negate the resolution. Courts expect the city council, in consideration of the resolution, to engage in a good faith and judicious consideration of the pros and cons of the matter and base their determination on what's been heard. May I continue?
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
Motion to extend.
And, and that the city is not committed to the project before consideration tonight. As, as I mentioned, the public interest and necessity do not require this project. In fact, the project was not identified in the city's general plan. The general plan identifies several intersection improvement projects. Aviation and Artesia Boulevard is not one of them. I'm sorry. It does not identify the northbound right turn lane as one of the proposed improvements. It identifies an eastbound right turn and a southbound right turn, but not the northbound right turn. Moreover, in the listing in the general plan, circulation element of problematic intersections brought to the city's attention by the public, Artesia and Aviation Boulevard was not identified as a problematic intersection. Another reason the public interest and necessity don't require the project, it doesn't provide any meaningful improvement. As, as there was a discussion about level of service, the city's own analysis establishes that there's no meaningful improvement. It's a level of service F without the project, and it's a level of service F with the project. If, to the extent a measurable impact or improvement is identified, it's offset by a degradation. In other words, where the intersection improves in the morning, it degrades in the afternoon. Again, no meaningful improvement. And finally, the project doesn't meet the standard, the traffic engineering standards for such a project. 300 vehicles an hour making that right turn movement? In none of the traffic counts, including the 2030 future condition, none of them does it reach 300. In fact, it barely reaches 200 in most of the conditions. With respect to greatest public good and least private injury, the, the law says that the city must consider alternatives. In this case, the only alternative considered or evaluated was a no-project alternative. And of course, we have, tonight, you'll hear an alternative that does provide greater public good and no private injury. Here, the city's own appraisal, a $429,000 damage to the property, very significant injury, and that's without any consideration of the business damages.
Can I get another motion to extend, Mr. Block?
Second.
Thank you. Any objection? Go ahead.
I have an objection.
Go ahead, Mr. Block.
All right, I have two more matters that were raised in the administrative report and Mr. Wenji's presentation tonight. First of all, the suggestion somehow that the Planning Commission's rejecting the right-turn dedication in 1997 has any relevance to the matter before you tonight. First of all, Mr. Madonie objected in 1997 to the dedication requirement, as well as the closure of the northernmost driveway. Both, both conditions from staff at that time were rejected by the Planning Commission as unjustified. They found that there were no safety issues, and and if, in fact, the city contemplated a right turn lane, it would have to acquire the property under eminent domain. Um, so this situation, we look at it fresh and new as of twenty twenty-one without regard to that. Um, as to the staff's indication that the station was developed with the dedication requirement contemplated, as you can see in the drawings that were presented, there's a landscape planter within that area, there is signage within that area, and other site improvements within the area. So clearly, the development of the gas station was done without contemplation of the right turn lane. And finally, um, the reference, even the reference and consideration of that earlier, uh, dedication requirement, um, raises significant concerns that the, the council is committed to proceed with this project notwithstanding what evidence is presented before you tonight. I'm very concerned that the, the city is pre-committed, the council, without giving due consideration to the evidence presented tonight. The city council is obligated to review the matter fresh and new without any preconceptions. Otherwise, its determination or its decision would constitute a gross abuse of discretion. Finally, the suggestion that this project was identified in the, the, uh, the county government plan as a Priority One project is a mischaracterization and is misleading. The project that's identified in that document was to improve Aviation Boulevard at several intersections. El Segundo Boulevard, Marine Avenue, and Artesia Boulevard. Those improvements, and there have been improvements at those intersections, and are proposed for this intersection. Again, the eastbound right turn lane and the southbound right turn lane are improvements. This particular project, the right turn, the northbound right turn, is not included. So with that, um, we are, I'm available for questions, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stevenson. Brian Stevenson is a professional consulting engineer, uh, with more than twenty years' experience with the firm of Rick Engineering. On this particular project and analysis, he worked with Bob Stockton. Um, Mr. Stockton sadly passed away last year, and so he's not able, was not able to complete the work, but he was involved from the, the outset on this matter. I've, uh, I, I assume that others are, are familiar with Mr. Stockton, a very well-known traffic engineer in the community. Mr. Stevenson serves as the traffic engineer to the city of Murrieta and has done work for the cities of San Diego, Sacramento, Azusa, Ontario, Lake Elsinore, very established, knowledgeable traffic engineer. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Stevenson.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Block. Go ahead, Mr. Stevenson. Um, everybody gets three minutes, but, um, you can be extended, uh, with approval from the council.
Okay.
So moved.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor and staff. My name is Brian Stevenson with Rick Engineering. I'm, uh, actually, first, do we have our PowerPoint presentation that we can view? Is that available, or? We had submitted that prior to the meeting?
Is that available, Andy? Or anyone have that presentation, Mr.?
Yes.
Presentation? Can we, uh, put that up for him?
Um, I, this is Regina Danner. Um, I believe that the PowerPoint, um, was, um, printed and submitted to City Council as, uh, filed and received at the commencement of this action. Um, it was not anticipated to be, um, you know, a shared screen type of, um, situation.
It was emailed at six thirty-nine. So you should all have it in emails.
Okay. Um, all right, well, why don't you, uh, just talk through it anyway, Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, okay, I, I plan on walking through that if, if you have it available. Anyways, I'd like to briefly discuss the city's proposed northbound right turn lane project, as well as an alternative project that's anticipated to operate better than the proposed PSRE project and fits within the existing roadway width.
Let me ask you, uh, how long is this going to take?
I have about five and a half minutes.
Okay, can I get a motion to allow Mr. Stevenson six minutes?
Motion to allow for six minutes.
Thank you.
So moved. Second. Okay. Uh, a- any objection? Okay, then go ahead and take, uh, six minutes, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, sir. The existing conditions at the intersection currently have the same lane geometry for three of the approaches. The northbound, southbound, and westbound approaches all have a left turn lane and two through lanes with a shared right turn lane. The eastbound approach to the intersection has a left turn lane, two through lanes, and a right turn lane. The planned improvements at the intersection in the general plan show an eastbound right turn lane, which is already existing, and a southbound right turn lane, which is within the city of Manhattan Beach. Within the capital improvement program of Redondo Beach is the northbound right turn lane, this project we're discussing tonight. Within the general plan's circulation element, there's a policy P nine that says where feasible, maintain or achieve a level of service D at city intersections. The city's PSRE analysis, which was prepared in two thousand nine, shows that the existing level of service was F for the AM and PMP hours. The build-out, city build-out, which was year twenty thirty, uh, without the project, was level of service F for the two peak hours. And then with the addition of that northbound right turn lane, it was still an F for those two peak hours. Based on the traffic volumes that were in the city's PSRE analysis, we prepared a queuing analysis. A queuing analysis is how far a vehicle extends from an intersection. The draft plans that the city provided us show a storage pocket for that northbound right turn lane of a hundred and thirty feet. The, the build-out traffic volumes for twenty thirty show that for the AM peak hour, that queue is anticipated to be about a hundred and thirty-one feet, which would fit within that hundred and thirty-foot pocket. However, for the PM peak hour, it's anticipated to be a hundred and seventy-one feet, which doesn't fit in the right turn lane. It would spill out in the through lane. But that doesn't really matter because the, the queue for the through lanes adjacent to that is shown to be no less than two hundred and fifty-five feet per lane. So with a queue of two hundred and fifty-five feet per lane, you can't get into that turn pocket. I had a, a slide that showed the, the right turn volumes. From two thousand nine, that north, northbound right turn, uh, volume, it's a hundred and twenty-six vehicles in the morning peak hour, a hundred and sixty-five in the evening peak hour. And then in twenty fifteen, it was a hundred and seven, a hundred and seventy. We did some counts on two days in twenty eighteen, which was roughly a hundred and ninety and a hundred and forty. And then the twenty thirty volumes show a volume of a hundred and ninety for the AM peak hour and two seventy for the PMP peak hour. All of those volumes fall below three hundred vehicles per hour, which is important because the Federal Highway Capacity Manual standard is that an exclusive right turn lane is often provided when the right turn volume exceeds three hundred vehicles per hour per lane. So for none of the conditions, uh, existing or city build-out, are there anticipated to be more than three hundred vehicles per hour in that lane. We came up with an alternative project to achieve similar results or improvements to the PSRE project without the need to acquire private property, and that's to install dual, two westbound left turn lanes at the intersection. The same Highway Capacity Manual states that a single left turn lane is often provided when the left turn volume ranges between a hundred and three hundred vehicles per hour. And similarly, a dual left turn lanes are often provided when the volume exceeds three hundred vehicles per hour. The two thousand nine volumes were, the maximum was two hundred and eighty vehicles turning, which is almost to the threshold of three hundred. The twenty eighteen volumes that we counted on two separate days, uh, were a maximum of two hundred and sixty vehicles for that peak hour. And then the city's build-out analysis that was in the PSRE shows three hundred and twenty in the AM peak hour and five hundred and thirty in the PMP hour. Five hundred and thirty is almost double the requirement of a single left turn lane. So that's, that, uh, is significantly higher than the typical trigger for dual left turn lanes. We had an exhibit in the, in the PowerPoint that shows that you can fit the dual left turn lanes and the through lanes in the existing curb-to-curb width along Artesia Boulevard without the need for acquiring extra property. And then there's also a slide in there that shows the city's updated PSRE analysis, which was discussed by staff earlier in this presentation, showed that it was going to be level of service F in the morning and F in the evening. With our project, we can get it to a level of service E in the morning and an F in the evening. So it's roughly a thirty-second, uh, betterment for the PMP hour. Our conclusion is that the city's PSRE analysis shows that the right turn project does not improve level of service at the intersection, goes from F to F. And it would require the take of private property and impact traffic at the driveways during construction. Our alternative analysis shows an improvement in comparison to the proposed northbound right turn project. It would not require the take of private property. It would fit within the existing curb-to-curb width on Artesia Boulevard, and it would serve the city's own projected traffic volumes for that left turn movement in the future. And that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, great. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you.
Or Ted, have you guys had an opportunity to evaluate, uh, their presentation and their idea?
Um, maybe I'll start that off. We, we haven't necessarily evaluated their presentation. Uh, that part of, some of that information was provided with Mr. Block's letter in January the fifth. Uh, the presentation documents we received tonight, as you did, uh, later in the evening. Um, and I can have Gene go through and articulate a little bit of, uh, Mr. Stevenson's comments about the level of service, uh, addressing the numerical analysis. I know Andy talked about it earlier. Um, there are methods in analyzing levels of service. Um, and besides that, there are methods for circulation enhancements that we can discuss a little bit further as well. Gene, or Mayor, did you want us to articulate on any of the technical numbers, or what are you looking for?
Yeah, what I'm getting at is, um, you know, they presented this, this, uh, alternative. Apparently, tonight, they presented this alternative. I've, I've never seen it. I don't think the rest of the council has ever seen this alternative. And I was curious if you have seen this alternative and had the opportunity to analyze this alternative to give, um, you know, some sort of opinion about it. And, um, I assume we can continue the public hearing if the council decides to do that, to give you the opportunity to analyze, uh, this new alternative that has been presented.
Yeah, and I think we can add, we can comment on that. Um, as we looked at it, there's a couple of things. One, it is a new alternative that's being considered. So Mr. Stevenson is correct in, um, looking at the level of service for the entire intersection. Though the dual lefts and the westbound direction don't alleviate any of the queuing or delays that are occurring in the northbound movement, uh, they do improve the overall intersection. The other part is that those improvements are actually within the city of Manhattan Beach. Uh, that upper corner, upper portions of the street are within the city of Manhattan Beach. Um, it would require the elimination of parking, uh, the re-channelization of the travel lanes, and alignment of the east and the west legs of the intersection in order for it to operate properly. That's something that could be looked at further and explored with the city of Manhattan Beach. But seeing that that's not an improvement that's within our jurisdictional, uh, area, we don't have the ability, uh, to recommend such an improvement or to pursue such an improvement. Uh, Gene, did you want to add some more information on the technical aspects of it?
Uh, no, I, I think you pretty much captured everything.
Okay. Um, well, I'll just say, um, you know, council has a discretion, uh, how to proceed. If they're comfortable with the analysis they see, or if they want to continue the hearing, they, they have a lot of options here. I just want the council to understand, uh, what their options, so, um. Yeah, with that, I'll go to Councilmember Horvath.
Um, yeah, my first question was, uh, for Andy to speak to some of the, um, some of the issues raised by Mr. Block. Uh, I just didn't know if you wanted to, uh, to respond to some of his comments. Uh, and then I have another question.
I would like to speak to the issue of the, uh, the nineteen ninety-six, uh, decision about the right turn lane. I, I was not trying to imply that, uh, the city is locked into the project. What I was trying to emphasize was that, uh, the part of the objection letter stated the injury to the business affairs, uh, on the grounds, presumably for circulation and other things, and that the project was designed with, uh, those considerations in mind. Yes, the planter is there and the sign, uh, pylon sign would need to be removed, uh, removed by the project, and the proposed, the offer that was proposed, um, included money to relocate those amenities on the site. But in terms of traffic flow and reaching the pumps, uh, the pump islands, and that kind of thing, those did not seem to be affected as evidenced by the fact that the design and the footprint of the project itself, uh, back in nineteen ninety-six, anticipated, at least up until the Planning Commission hearing, uh, the, the, uh, dedication of a, I think it was a twelve-foot lane was proposed at the time.
Okay, he also, uh, said that it's not identified in the general plan, and I assume he's referring to the nineteen ninety-four general plan?
You know, I don't know the last time the circulation element was updated in the general plan. Um, I think we have, probably have a number of projects considered necess- necessary in the city that are not specifically identified in the general plan. It is in the capital improvement plan, uh, that was adopted by council, uh, last year and has been for the last several years. Um, so-
And we do, we do update its circulation elements every so often, correct?
We do. I don't think we have done that one recently. However, Ted or, uh, Randy, if you're on the line, you'll have to help me with that.
I was pausing just to see if Randy's on the line. My understanding is that Andy is correct. It has not been updated. It is a component that I think has been discussed as far as the general plan update, um, elements that are occurring today that has not been updated in the recent, as that I'm aware of.
Okay. Um-
Randy is on. Do you want to say anything more, Randy?
No, that's correct. It, uh, it's not part of the gen- current general plan update. Um, it is something that we will be looking at, um, updating, but it, it's, you know, not, has, has not been updated recently.
Okay.
Um, a question for, uh, either Mr. Stevenson or Mr. Block. Um, in, uh, you, you mentioned Mr. Mondani, you know, has, has been there for thirty years and, and understands the traffic, uh, most intimately as the owner of the property. I'm just wondering, as part of your traffic analysis and/or recent studies, did you take into the account, um, the innumerable amount of cars that pull off of Aviation and into the parking lot of, uh, the Denny's, uh, and go around the Denny's and the Valvoline to exit as a right turn onto, uh, Artesia? Also, the cars that pull in through the southern entrance to the station and just, instead of getting gas, cut through and pull out onto Artesia? Because I, I'm just presenting that, uh, anecdotally as somebody who drives through that intersection, um, multiple times a week, uh, during the rush hour time in the morning and in the afternoon, and I see it happen often. Uh, and I'm, I'm not an engineer. I, I'm, I'm just looking at it as a layperson. But, uh, but I see people who are frustrated with the queuing and waiting times, uh, there, and that is their solution, which is against the law. So, uh, I'm just curious if, uh, if that was something that you observed in your studies.
Um, I, I'll, I'll speak to it first, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Stevenson. But in, in my discussions with Mr. Madani regarding, uh, issues with, regarding the site, he has not identified what, what you described Councilman, uh, Horvath as, as an issue. Um, I'll, I'll let Brian address it more specifically, but, but that's not an issue of right turns. That's an issue, as Mr. Stevenson pointed out, as to the through traffic and the backup, which, which Mr. Stevenson pointed out, the right turn lane is not going to solve because you're still going to have traffic backed up where cars that want to make that right turn won't be able to access the pocket, uh, the proposed project. Um, go ahead, Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah, we, that was not taken into consideration when the counts were performed. Um, I don't believe those would have been taken into consideration when the city performed the counts in oh-nine and twenty fifteen. But when we performed them two separate times in twenty eighteen, we did not take that into consideration. We had our traffic counter count the vehicles at the actual intersection with the traffic signal and, and let us know what movements were occurring.
Great. And the, and the only reason I bring it up is because the extension, the proposed extension of a right-hand, a dedicated right-hand turn lane going back a hundred and thirty feet, um, to disagree with Mr. Block's, uh, comment, uh, just previously, is that, yes, people are queued up, but if there is a dedicated right-hand turn lane, they would not have to illegally turn into, uh, the Denny's or into the Mondani property in order to circumvent, uh, waiting to queue, uh, all the way to the corner before having to make a right-hand turn. That, that was, again, as I said, it's a layperson's observation, uh, that, that I have noticed- have noticed, uh, on a daily basis. So, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Well, I would say a layperson's observation on a daily basis is an extremely important piece of, uh, yeah, what I would say, uh, uh, input into why something like this, uh, could be good for the public. I've heard numerous public comments, uh, very similar to what Councilmember Horvath has dictated, that, um, huge, huge backup on aviation northbound in the morning and that, uh, much of it is people trying to turn right onto Artesia Boulevard. So, I would ask Andy, Andy, could you put up your graph again of that intersection that shows the proposed right turn lane?
Uh, yeah.
Mayor, did you want the one with the aerial background or the technical drawing that was up?
Uh, either one probably will work fine. Probably the technical one would be better.
Oh, sorry. There we are.
Yeah. So, uh, how long, again, would this, uh, right, what would be the length of this right turn lane?
Uh, I think that's right. It's approximately 135 feet, somewhere in that vicinity. Looking for the dimension on here.
So, Mr. Stevenson mentioned that the, uh, backup due to the, just the northbound traffic is much longer than that, and so you would not be able to access that right turn lane?
Not, not until you got within 130 feet. Um, it does also provide, uh, a refuge for vehicles turning right that are waiting for pedestrians to cross, to not interfere with the, a shared through right lane like we have now. So, that doesn't really get captured in any of the measurements. Um, but that, uh, that is a reality at that intersection.
Wow. So, I would assume if it could be longer, um, you might reduce it even further, uh, but since it can't be longer, that's just the way it is.
Uh, yes, that's right.
Your Honor, I mean, the, the other part that I would add to Andy's comment there, when you have that right turn lane available for the vehicles that are going northbound wishing to make a right turn into, onto Artesia, it's serving as both the deceleration lane and the ability for that vehicle to make that right turn un, without impeding any of that through movement. It also allows them to access that pocket during the periods when the queuing in the through lanes and the number two through lane is not beyond the pocket. And up until that point, you could get five to six vehicles within that pocket to be able to make that right turn on red when they've actually queued in after the signal has circulated. Those are elements that don't get picked up analytically, but operationally, and when you do the observations out there, you would see those level of improvements, um, to allow the use, the benefit of the use for those five or six vehicles that can now make it through that turn in a single cycle while on red if it's safe to do so, and then the much freer movement when that green light is available for northbound vehicles.
Yeah, no, thanks for those points, Ted, and for those of us who drive it during those periods, uh, when somebody's got to turn right under Artesia and people are trying to move through, obviously you've got to slow down if you're going to turn right, which slows down the throughput, which, uh, hampers the throughput of the intersection and further degrades it. So, that's not captured in the, uh, the level of service analysis and the general performance of the intersection that, you know, since there's no right turn lane, traffic is slowed by those turning right?
It's not in this, in the technical sense. It is something that you do know operationally will happen because you're now allowing the through movements to go through. When you're looking at just sheer numbers, right, you're capturing the numbers that get through the intersection and through the cycle by time, but it doesn't take that into effect. And therefore, these are the, the elements that you could see during both the northbound green phase as well as the northbound red phase where you can still get those five or six vehicles through the right turn that have queued up in that right turn pocket.
Uh, it surprised me, you know, this is a former engineer, not, not traffic, but chemical, you know, when you do these sorts of analyses, you would think the model would capture that, um, if there's not a right turn lane, then obviously people will be turning right and slowing traffic and affecting the throughput of the intersection. So, yeah, I just sort of thought the model would, would take into account, um, capacity through the intersection based on the fact that there's no right turn lane versus there is a right turn lane. And so-
Yeah, maybe I'm, I may have misspoken in there. You're right, it does. When there is a dedicated right turn lane, it will capture the amount of time that's saved by those vehicles coming through. That is a technical, uh, technically correct. It's certain delays that are intangible, like the, the slowing down, or maybe even if there's a pedestrian, as Andy mentioned, that's trying to cross, uh, that east leg of the intersection, now that vehicle that's trying to turn right is actually stopped. It's no longer just slowing down to make the turn. Those are the elements that you don't capture, um, in the technical sense, but you will see them, uh, observationally, and you'll see them in the level of service and the time delay for each of the movements in that part of the intersection.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll take a couple more council comments and questions, and then we'll go to the public council member, Grant.
Hi, thank you. Um, so, uh, Andy, when, um, Mr. Block and Mr. Stevenson mentioned that the, the improvements created by this right turn, this northbound right turn will not change significantly the LOS on this, uh, this corner. You said that it still goes, it goes from an F to an F. When you were going through your presentation, you said that there's a 26.6 second, uh, change when you take both the, uh, southbound and northbound improvements that are going to be putting, being put in, thus making it go from an, an F to an E. Is that what I heard? Did I, did I hear that correctly?
That's right. Although we still are in the letter grade F, we improve by 26 seconds, more or less, which in my, as a motorist, not as an engineer, but as a motorist, I would notice that. Letter grade hasn't significantly changed. We're just shy of the threshold to get to the next, uh, letter grade up. Uh, we still have a 20% improvement in the total delay time, uh, for that northbound movement.
And Andy, that's per vehicle at that point, not, not just total for that, um, for that period.
Okay. So, you know, so when we're looking at, at the findings that we have to make, is that enough of a finding to, to say that this is an improvement? I mean, as a motorist, I think 26.6 seconds is a, is a excellent improvement. What they're pointing out is that since it doesn't change the LOS letter designation, then it's not necessarily a, a, a valid way to measure that. And am I, what yardstick am I supposed to use on that portion? And maybe our, our attorney, could you chime in on that?
Ted, I'm not sure if you want to pick up on that yet. You know, that those are the numbers. It's a, it's a judgment whether that, um, a letter grade or the time, the seconds. I mean, to his point, the general plan calls out trying to get the intersections to a letter D, but we're certainly not there. Um, we are making improvements that is in the public interest, and without this, uh, you know, piece, the intersection doesn't get better as much as it could if we do all of the projects. For instance, the project that was presented as an alternative is a, a good idea that we should explore, but it doesn't meet the objective of this project when it was identified in the grant program for Measure R. So, uh, we're not, as Ted mentioned, we're not really at liberty to substitute one for the other under this, this grant project.
I understand.
And I think, Andy, I think one, one thing to, to keep in mind here is that you've got incremental improvements. You don't have a single improvement that's going to go ahead and, and, and change the level of service, uh, at these intersection, at this intersection. So, the northbound dedicated right turn lane is one of those improvements, a component of the improvements that we've seen for the overall intersection. Um, as was mentioned earlier, the eastbound Artesia to southbound aviation, that dedicated right turn lane was installed by the city years ago. The city of Manhattan Beach is currently, uh, going through the same process that we are for the southbound dedicated right turn lane from aviation to westbound Artesia. Um, the, the project about the dual left versus single left for westbound Artesia could be looked at as a further improvement to the intersection. Obviously, it's got a, it needs to be vetted through, uh, for its impact and obviously be considered by the city of Manhattan Beach at that point. But this particular project that we're discussing tonight is a component, um, of the overall intersection improvements. It does have a, a significant level of improvement, and when you look at those 26 seconds per vehicle and multiply that by the number of vehicles that are going through the intersection during the peak hour, you do come up with some significant savings. And that falls into the general plan, reduction in greenhouse, greenhouse gases from vehicles needing to idle longer, taking longer to get through the intersection and/or to make that right turn.
Um, if we can go back to then the planning commission decision back, and I believe it was 97, I think is referenced, uh, one of the things that had been described to us, and I just want clarification here, is that, uh, when the Mondanis actually purchased this property, that they were told that these easements were indeed there and that they purchased this property knowing that this left, this right turn lane may, may be something that comes up in their future. Is that true?
Uh, I didn't read that in the minutes that I read, uh, from 1996 was the hearing I was looking at, June 20th, 1996. Um, I didn't have all the detail of the staff report, doesn't seem to be in our records, but the minutes are there. Um, and the minutes, uh, show the, uh, conditions, uh, the staff report is present, actually the staff report was in another place. I did find that eventually. Um, it doesn't talk about an easement being there, although the, uh, the minutes indicate that the city's engineering staff at the time, um, had understood this project to be a council priority, a council, uh, misidentified need. Um, to what degree that had been advanced in 1996, I don't know, but it was enough that in the staff report and the meeting minutes, that discussion was pretty thorough about, uh, the need for a future project there when the, when the CUP was being reviewed.
So, so when the planning commission looked at the CUP, they, that's when they said, well, we're going to pull that condition out? And, and what condition did they pull out again? I'm sorry.
Uh, the two, the two that were mentioned, the, uh, north driveway, the northernmost driveway, uh, was, uh, condition was for that to be closed. Um, and then also a dedic, a 12-foot dedication for the length of the property along, adjacent to aviation. Um, moved from the list of conditions that staff had presented in their staff report.
So, okay. That's all I have for it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Andy.
Um, okay. So, can, can we go back to the slide that shows the widths in which we are, um, look, looking at on the, let's see, what page is that? Hold on, let me pull it up. It's page five out of 10 on the presentation.
Is it this one? Let me get my numbered list.
It's the, it's the aerial shot. It's like a Google map, and it has the red and the blue outline of the, of the property. This one. So, just, just to make sure I'm understanding what this, this is. So, um, when you have 10 feet there, you're saying that you're, you're pushing back 10 feet exactly right there. Um, he, so he's losing 10 feet of property and then he's losing five feet of property? Is that what you're saying on those numbers?
The five feet is temporary construction easement. That's so we can put up a construction fence to protect the public from the project and give the workers a little room to move around.
So, it's just 10 feet all the way across? That's what I wanted to clarify. So, he's losing 10 feet of his property of a 1.26 acre property.
Right. It, it narrows down here at the south end to, tapers down to nothing, and then up here, uh, the width changes to eight feet right at the corner here.
Okay. So, then if we go back, then to the required findings, uh, public interest and necessity required for the project. I have also witnessed people getting frustrated with the long line of cars and having them go through, through Denny's and go behind the property, go through the property, um, in an unsafe manner because they're, they're very frustrated and they go through angrily. Um, the project is, uh, planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. Those are very subjective terms, least private injury, but it just seems like 10 feet off of a 1.26 acre property in which you can still access the pumps, correct? And there will still be landscaping between the sidewalk? Uh, will there still be landscaping between the sidewalk and the property or no?
I think most of that is eliminated. There might be one little piece. We're kind of at the 75% design level, so that hasn't been fleshed out, but there's not much. If there's some, there might be some.
Okay.
And Councilwoman, I, I do want to add to your question, though, that the importance of why Andy said that the project was designed and constructed with that dedication in mind, when the project site plan was prepared for the planning commission, uh, back in the 90s, it, it set back everything to accommodate that right turn lane, and therefore, since it was constructed in the same manner, um, it, it does identify a fully functional and operational, uh, gas station that was originally designed to make that accommodation.
Right. That's what I'm hearing as well. Um, okay. So, can I ask, uh, our legal staff, what, um, do you, just based on what I'm reading, it looks like we have the findings for a resolution, um, and I just wanted to get a, a sanity check from our, from Mike Webb?
I'm not certain asking an attorney for a sanity check.
I was going to say, I, I mean, I've never heard it quite put that way, but, uh, yeah, Mike, uh-
So, I would say before answering that question, I would say two things. One, you should hear from everyone who wants to speak in the public. You've heard a great deal from staff. You've heard from the representative of the property owner. Uh, it's important to, uh, hear everyone from who wants to testify in the public hearing, and then ultimately, it's going to be up to you. Um, it's eminent domain is, is covered by a lot of, uh, different sections of law from the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution to the government codes, and those four sections that both our outside counsel and Mr. Mondanis are referring to or from the Code of Civil Procedure, you have to, the council has to make those findings. And if the council, after hearing all of the evidence, believes it can make those findings, then go ahead. If you have more questions, and I would, um, seek Gina's input, but normally you would continue the, uh, the public hearing. And unless there is some sort of specific timeframe, if you have any questions, then you can, you can do that. But I would certainly, before deciding that, I would, um, listen to everyone who's going to testify tonight on this item.
I didn't see any hand, I, I did check that. There, the only hand up is Mr. Block, which we heard extensively from. Um, but, uh, okay. Well, then I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, let's turn to the public. Are there any public comments?
You're muted, Eleanor, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I have, uh, Mike Mandini and Nicole Mandini. I'm not sure if they want to speak on this item also. So, I will ask-
Give them the opportunity.
Yes. There we go. There's Mike.
Do you want to speak, Mr. Mondani?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. Uh, you know, you guys keep talking about 10 feet. It is not just 10 feet. You're destroying a pump island and you're pushing away a lot of my customers to go some other locations. There's many other gas stations. You're making it very hard for them to get in and get out. And, uh, it is 1,800 feet and keep talking about 1.26 acre. It's got nothing to do with it. You're destroying a part of my pump island that make it convenient for my customers to go through and get their gas. And now you're bringing up an issue of people going through Denny's. Uh, that hardly ever happens. You guys are making this up. I think you guys have, uh, sat down and decided in advance how you're going to vote, and you just want to take my property. It's not fair. I have worked, uh, 30 years as of last Saturday to build this business, and now you're going to destroy it by closing it down for six months, a year, whatever it takes, and running to a lot of problems with utilities. You're going to shut down 60% of my business because that is what I get from Aviation Boulevard. 60% of my business from Aviation Boulevard. You're going to remove my sign, which is a grandfathered, uh, 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 sign that has been there for over 50 years, and you're gonna, uh, move the truck, gas, gasoline truck, doesn't know how, how it's going to get in, how it's going to get out. You guys have not even thought this through. You just wanted a project, decided you want to spend some money that somebody throw at you- wanted a project, decided you want to spend some money that somebody throw at you, and you're just going to go ahead with this, and that's not fair.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Madonis?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, some, stick around, some council members might have a question for you, but I do want to address the idea that we have discussed this ahead of time. I'd like to go through with each council member. Councilmember Narinhan, have you had any discussions about this with any other council member?
I have not. I've only talked about this in closed session with other council members and staff. I have not talked to anyone on the council in open session or outside of closed session.
Councilmember Lowenstein, have you had any other discussions with any other council member?
I have not. Thank you.
And Councilmember Horvath?
I called Councilmember Grant this afternoon and talked for a few minutes.
And Councilmember Grant?
I spoke with Councilman, or Councilmember Horvath for just a couple of minutes, but we did not determine how to vote, that's for sure.
And Councilmember Endy?
No.
And I take it that, is there any council member here who does not remain open-minded?
We're open-minded.
Everyone's open-minded, I assume. Okay, not hearing anything, just to, just to clear that up. Likewise, I have not had any meetings either with any, any council members to make any preemptive decision.
Okay. Mayor, I want to check to see if Nicole Mandini would like to speak.
Sure, go ahead.
So, there you go.
No, no, thank you. I stand by what Mr. Madonis said.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Horvath?
Yeah, a follow-up question for Ted. When you were talking about incremental, you know, every intersection kind of goes through a certain incremental process, and, and you did mention the other project on the southbound side in Manhattan Beach at the Chase Bank that is proposed. So we are just coming within the cusp of, of potentially effectuating a movement from F to E, but we're, we're, we're missing it. When Manhattan Beach, assuming they finalize that process on the, on the other corner, that also adds to that incremental process, right? So is it safe to say that that's going to push the intersection over to threshold into an LOS of E? I'm just curious.
Maybe I'll ask Jean to help with it moving from the threshold. Is it an incremental improvement as well? Absolutely. I think every one of those dedicated lanes that we installed becomes an incremental improvement to the intersection overall. Jean, I don't recall the level of service with the southbound right turn and the northbound right turn?
Right. It would, it may provide some type of incremental improvement, yes, but I don't believe there's any analysis done showing both the northbound right and southbound right in conjunction with each other.
Okay. And then I, I would just speak to Mr. Madonis' comments just there. You know, I, I have not made any determination coming into this meeting ahead of time. But I will say, I, in the five and a half years plus that I've been on this council, I've also been serving on the Transportation Committee for the South Bay City Council of Governments, and as long as I've been serving on that body, this has been an identified project. So that's since 2015, and clearly it was an identified project before I even came on to the council. And so it's not just this body, the city council, that views it as a, a project, but actually the the regional entity and the Metro Board and the Metro staff have identified it as a a project that has regional implications. So I, I just want to point that out, that there, there are other people that have, have evaluated this aside from just us in this moment here. That's all.
Okay, Councilmember Grant?
So going back to the alternate product or alternative projects that were described and/or identified tonight. How is, how important is it for us to take a look at that? And I know Mr. Samanji had mentioned that that's not something that we can substitute. I mean, we have measure our funding for this project and not another. But looking at the, and as the mayor had mentioned, looking at the analysis of this project that was proposed tonight, so kind of one of the first times we're actually seeing that, is that something that is germane here?
Well, I think what's important is that we bring this conversation with the city of Manhattan Beach. This is obviously within their right-of-way for consideration. As I said earlier, is it, is it an improvement to the intersection overall? I believe so. Every movement that is impacted can be improved, and Mr. Stevenson had identified a movement that, that can be, can improve the overall level of service at the intersection. So with this project movement, I think this also gives us information to pursue with the city of Manhattan Beach and our ability to potentially support them if they move forward with a project to consider those improvements as well.
All right. All right, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Well, there are no more public comments. Eleanor?
No, but Mr. Block and Mr. Steph Stevenson has raised their hand. I don't know if you.
Okay, yeah, they'd like to speak again. Mr.? I think Mr. Stevenson is asking.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that the analysis with the dual left turn lanes was included in our January 5th letter addendum that we had submitted, and that was, I believe, Attachment C to the staff report. So that, that alternative had been submitted to the city. And I also wanted to add that the, the southbound right turn lane that the city of Manhattan Beach has is included in your general plan as well. And that was included in the, in our analysis, updated analysis, that shows that the PSRE analysis for this right turn lane is still a level of service F. And then if we swap out that northbound right turn lane to the dual westbound left, we can get the AM peak hour to an E. And overall, it reduces the delay for the PM peak hour by 29.5 seconds. So, so just something to consider. We, we did previously submit that, and that should be an attachment C of the January 5th addendum. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Block. Looks like he wants to speak again.
I, I would just briefly to address a couple of things. First of all, in, in the general plan, just to clarify, it's the 2009 General Plan circulation element. On page 28, it identifies Aviation Boulevard and Artesia Boulevard, and it references an eastbound right turn lane and a southbound right turn lane. Does not reference this project, the northbound right turn lane. The, as Mr. Stevenson pointed out, this alternative was presented in, with our letter two weeks ago, as well as Rick Engineering, Mr. Stevenson's very thorough traffic analysis that supported that. That actually is referenced in the administrative report at the end on page 14 of 15. And it says, "City gratefully acknowledges this analysis and may consider these additional improvements to the intersection. However, such a project does not alleviate the delays experienced by Aviation's northbound motorists, the primary objective of this project." Mr. Stevenson will correct me if I'm wrong, but Rick Engineering's analysis shows that that statement is incorrect. The eastbound left turn will improve delays in this intersection. And if you look at page nine of Mr. Stevenson's PowerPoint presentation, you will see the right, or the middle column shows the city's updated analysis, what staff reflected shows almost an E. That's the F condition, level of service, at 82.1. So what, what is meant by nearly E is that it's nearly 80. But if you look in the afternoon condition, it's 113.8, which is a degradation. And that, that updated analysis looks at both northbound and southbound. So the project that Manhattan Beach is doing, as well as what's being considered tonight. But then if you look to the left, it is shaded in green, this is the southbound project, Manhattan Beach project, which is noted as GP in the general plan. And the eastbound left turn lanes, the ones that would not require any acquisition of private property, it would be completely within the existing right-of-way, shows clearly an E, 72.6. So clearly an E below, better than what just the northbound and southbound right turn would present. And look in the afternoon. The conditions that, that Mr. Horvath and Ms. Endy described as when people cut through, there, it's nearly an E, 84. So it is an F condition, but that provides significant improvement to this intersection, does not require any taking of private property. Unless there's any other questions, that's all that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other public comments, Eleanor?
Yes, Zainab Baji Jr.?
Howdy, yo. Sorry, I want to maybe do two quick questions. First, if the measure R dollars aren't used on this project, what could they be used on? Is it, is it exclusively dedicated to right turn lanes or Aviation Boulevard? And secondly, what's the impact? Is this anticipated to have any reduction in the cut-through traffic that's experienced by the residents in the Golden Triangle on Ford? Is there any analysis of that? Thank you.
Andy or Ted, do you want to address those questions?
Sure, Mayor. As far as the impact to the Golden Triangle, as it was mentioned, this would, this would, this particular project and its potential improvements are not taking that into consideration. It is trying to improve the level of service, the operational improvements, and the northbound improvements of, or movements at the intersection in particular. The measure R dollars are very explicit to this improvement. They are not something that we can swap out and change or modify the scope of the project. It was, they are explicitly identified for the northbound right turn lane improvement project.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Mr. Baji?
I have him on.
Okay. Any other public comments?
No, Sini, I know everybody's got, still has their hand up, but we have no, oh, there we go. We have no comments.
Okay. Well, with that, Councilmember Grant, you have your hand up?
Sure. You know, a lot of good, good information has been delivered here, and I think that there are still some questions with the seriousness of eminent domain and the seriousness of what our decisions are here today. I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing to another date so that we can actually go out and take a look at the alternative project, just as its analysis and engage Manhattan Beach, just as a kind of a courtesy to do so, but also to, to get staff's feedback on some of the pieces that have been discussed here tonight. I'd like to hear how staff actually formally responds to, to some of the the, I guess, arguments against making the findings, and I, just a little bit more information. So I'd like to make a motion to do so. You know, I'd ask Mr. Saman and Andy how long you think it would take to, to do some analysis and come back with some what I would say is concrete answers to some of the things that have been discussed tonight. How long would that take?
Ted, you want to answer that? How long would it take to do any further analysis, you think?
Absolutely. I mean, we could reach out to the city of Manhattan Beach during the course of the week, start some investigations with them, and see how receptive they are to the, not just the analysis, but that consideration. I would say we can come back to you in six weeks, and I don't have a calendar in front of me to, to give a date. But maybe come back at the first meeting of March?
And, and would we be able to then come back with, I would say, kind of a more formal response to the the discussion here that we're for and against both the findings? Because I understand that we've, the city staff has said that they have these findings. The, the discussion presented here by Mr. Block has said that he does not believe that. So come back and have a little bit more analysis there. Is that something that we could have at that time as well?
Maybe I would defer to Gina to answer that aspect of it, as far as the findings are concerned. I think that's your, your observation, not necessarily ours. Gina?
Sure. We could absolutely respond in more detail. However, I do believe that the findings that are set forth in the agenda report are sufficient to support the adoption of a resolution necessity, but we're happy to supplement those findings with more information if that's what the council would like.
And Ms. Danner, would you be able to do that within that same timeframe of the March plus meeting, whatever the, what we were talking about?
Absolutely.
Then that would, that would be my motion to leave the public hearing open and continue it to that March meeting that Mr. Saman mentioned.
And Councilman Grant, I think if we make it to a date certain, that would be the March 2nd city council meeting?
Well, we won't be having a meeting. That would be election.
Probably March 9th.
March 9th.
March 9th.
I will second that motion there, Councilman Grant, because I'll get you to know him second.
Okay, there's a motion to continue the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Narinhan. Any further comments from the council? Are there any public comments? Oh, go ahead.
My comment is the traffic and circulation element that was referred to was not from 1994. It was from 2009, it was last updated. As far as I can tell from the website, the documentation that I have from the general plan. So I'd love to have that looked at specifically, as also I want to have the numbers looked at that they stated in the, in their reports, back in January and just now. I believe they're the same, but I want to make sure I cover them well. So you know, eminent domain is very, is a very serious subject to me. That taking a public, private property for public uses is very, very serious. And we're going to be using a lot of tax money regardless if it's, if it's coming from our general fund or not. To me, it's, it's all one big pot, and you know, impacts to the private business and private individual should be held at the highest regard. So I'll make sure we look at all the avenues, and if we have another route to go down, I fully support the, that route if, if we have that route to go down. So let's look at everything and make sure we exhaust all these avenues. So I support that motion.
Here I have Glenn Block, who raised his hand again.
Let me go to Councilmember Endy first. Councilmember Endy, you had a comment?
I do, I just want to make a comment about the solution that the, the engineer has made about eliminating the parking. I, I just want to point out that that is, yes, it's Manhattan Beach side, and there's a very popular daycare center, and one of the concerns about having the Chick-fil-A was the, was the parking issue over there, and it's already a bit crowded and congested on that side, and I think we'll get a lot of pushback from residents if we lose the parking on Artesia Boulevard in front of that daycare. So I just wanted, just wanted to point that out to you guys.
Hey, thank you. Going back, Eleanor, you said that Mr. Block had another comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Block.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to offer Rick Engineering and Mr. Stevenson to consult with city staff as they move forward with, with evaluating this further. You know, we're, we're available to, to collaborate and work with staff and, as they reevaluate this.
Okay, great. Thank you for that offer, and might be taking you up on that.
Okay.
Are there any other public comments?
That is it, Mayor. No ecomments.
Okay, that, there's a motion on the floor with a second. I'll do a roll call. Vote, Councilmember Narinhan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
And Councilmember Endy?
Aye.
Okay, so this public hearing is continued until March 9th. Thank you, everyone, for participating. To be continued. All right, moving right along. Discussion on possible action regarding approval of a professional services agreement with Pet Data for annual licensing services for the term January 19th, 2021 to January 18th, 2026. Marty Ruler?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you'll recall, a decision package for outsourcing the city's licensing function was approved with the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Given that direction, Steph reached out to the county and to Pet Data for proposals. The next step then was for financial services and the police department and staff to conduct interviews with both. From the proposals and the interviews, it was clear to staff that Pet Data would provide the best customer service to both the pet owners of Redondo Beach, who are animal control officers. And tonight we have with us Ann Campbell of Pet Data. So she has a short slide presentation for you that'll give more information about their services. And then after her presentation, both of us are available to answer any questions. So are you there, Ann, with the presentation?
I am. Hello. Good evening, Council. Let me share my screen here. Hello.
Hi, Ann. Thanks for joining.
Thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate it. All right, and you should be seeing my splash screen here for animal licensing presentation.
We see it.
Awesome. I love it when technology works. All right, so, thank you. I am Ann Campbell. I am the Director of Sales and Marketing for Pet Data. We were founded back in 1994 with a single mission, which was to make animal licensing easy for municipalities and for pet owners. We understand that each of our clients is unique and that no licensing program is identical to another one. We currently partner with more than 80 cities, counties and one state across the country, including the cities of Torrance, Culver City, Hawthorne, Lynwood, Garden Grove and Santa Barbara in Southern California. What's interesting about Pet Data is that we don't outsource any of our operations. Our offices and staff are located here in Dallas in Texas and everything we do for our clients is from our office. Printing, postage, mailing, call center, customer service, all of our staff are based right here to help our clients out. Our staff do not merely transcribe data into a database. All licensing documentation is received, is visually reviewed by Pet Data staff and each record goes through an extensive audit process before it posts. This means that we only issue a license tag if all information is complete and accurate. Everything we do is customized for each of our clients. And so for Redondo Beach, your forms, your applications, your renewal notices would all be customized for the city. We typically will include the city logo on our renewal notices. And then the graphic up right now is our online license graphic that we include for clients who are wanting to focus on online licensing like Redondo Beach is. Because everything we do is custom, we also provide a dedicated toll-free number to the city. And then our call agents will enter the phone as Redondo Beach Animal Licensing, or whichever phrase the city wishes us to answer. That way we are completely hidden from the citizens. We don't want to be the face of animal licensing for Redondo Beach. We want Redondo Beach to be the face of animal licensing. We just want to help make the city shine. We offer lots of different options for licensing. People can license through the mail. They can license online. When the license through the mail, checks are always made payable to the city and never to Pet Data. We also do custom reporting for the city. And so monthly reports can include sales data and an enforcement report. And that enforcement report shows folks who are known pet owners who have received notices and who have not responded. One of the other ways that we can help increase compliance for the city is to work with our municipalities to update animal ordinances, to include the requirement that veterinary clinics report their rabies vaccination data to the city. As a city's agent, we would take that data directly from the clinics and send a billing notice out to those pet owners, which says in essence, thank you for vaccinating Fluffy. It's time to license Fluffy. And that's a wonderful tool to help increase compliance. Because our reports are custom, we have standard reports, which includes sales and the basics of licensing. But we can also do other reports as well. My background is marketing and so I love doing our, our fun once a year report on the number one pet name across all of our clients. Spoiler, it's Bella. Across the board, Bella is the number one dog name for all of our clients across the US. Interesting fun fact. All of this, though, processing data, doing the billings, doing the notices, that's all really important. None of it matters, though, unless your data is safe. We take data protection extremely seriously. We have been PCI compliant since 2006. As part of our compliance, we also do not store any personal credit card information at any time. Also, as part of maintaining PCI compliance, we undertake a regular review of all security policies and procedures. Data integrity is an important part of any animal licensing program. We know that protecting our client's data at all times is paramount. We actively ensure our client's data integrity and our business continuity with processes and hardware, including a full suite generator backup for our offices and also remote encrypted data backups as well. We back up all databases continuously during the working day. And then nightly, all databases and key systems are backed up into a high capacity RAID storage. Client data is also copied to redundant secure cloud-based storage across the US. We have two data centers we currently use. And this backup configuration allows for complete recovery of the complete licensing database, even in the event of a major failure or severe damage to our facilities. Now, we're in Dallas. We're fairly insulated. We don't get snowstorms. We don't get tornadoes. But if something terrible was to happen, that means the city of Redondo's Beach's licensing data is safe. We handle all the details, too. These little screenshots here, that is Hawthorne, Culver City and Torrance's, Pet Data's websites there. We take care of everything for you. So we take great pride in our customer service for our clients. We are currently mailing over 2.2 million pieces of mail, including license tags every year. All of that comes out of our office. We process everything, including those rabies vaccination certificates. There's no extra charge for that. Our staff, our call center staff is amazing. With the pandemic, we have had to be pretty agile and moving our staff around. And they have just rolled and they've been fantastic. And they're currently taking over 90,000 calls every year. The most important thing, though, for what we do for the city is that the city at all times owns your data. Pet Data will never sell it, rent it, give it away. The data belongs to the city of Redondo Beach and we will happily provide it back to you at any time. We also provide access to the city to see your licensing data. It's called Pet Access. It's a secure web-based portal. We provide the city with the master password for that account. And then the city can give stakeholders who need to see licensing data, access to that information. It is read-only, which means it can't be tampered with. Our staff actually make updates on Pet Access through request through the city. I hope it's a quick overview. I went pretty fast. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help out and thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, one hand up for Councilmember Endy?
Okay, so just to be clear, this is just for licensing. We're still going to have somebody come out from the city if they have an issue with a pet of some kind. There'll still be somebody here to be able to handle it since they're in Dallas, correct?
Right.
Okay, and then, and so the $15,000 estimate based on how many there are, how, what's that price compared to what we spend now? I mean, how much of a savings are we seeing?
I would say, you know, and we're, and we're talking soft costs versus, versus hard costs, but probably about 30,000 a year.
Okay, and I thought that tags might be a little outdated. Are, don't, aren't most animals chipped now? I mean, can we incorporate like just, just, but can they, can somebody just enter the chip information into this so that you can license them that way or?
That's a question.
That would depend on, that would depend on the ordinance. Most of our clients do still have regular license tags. And that metal tag on the collar is a visual ID. So if a neighbor was to find a dog, they can get that pet home again. A chip requires a special reader, either from the vet or from the shelter, to find out who the owner is. We look at chipping as a great backup to a license. We do have some clients that require a chip and a rabies vaccination in order to receive their license. We don't have any right now that only require the chip, because a chip would have to be put in at the vet or at the shelter. It can't be issued over the counter at City Hall or through Pet Data.
Okay, but this is just for, so, so just so we make clear to the public, is this, this is just for the administration of doing the pet licensing. It's not a revamp of our entire pet enforcement department or how we handle things with the Carson Shelter or any of that stuff. It's just about this small part of how we handle pets in this city, correct?
Correct.
That's it. Thanks for now.
Okay, I would encourage everyone to have their pet chipped. That's extremely important. Everyone goes to the vet. That's the best way to recover your animal, dog, cat, whatever. Get lost, get picked up by animal control and there's no chip, there's no tag. Yeah, you could lose your loved one. So anyway, you know, your pet chipped, it's well worth the money. It's not expensive. Councilmember Grant?
Sure, I have a couple of questions here. So with regards to Pet Data, since you do this with a number of municipalities around the country, have you found that you have increased in some way the number of pets that gets licensed in a, in a city? We have.
We can.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, well, the idea is that we don't really have all of our pets in our city licensed. I mean, there's a number of folks that don't. Or they've been licensed and then the license goes out and then they never, never really can renew. Is that something that you can increase for us?
We could certainly try. We never make guarantees on that. A lot of it depends on your ordinance and your own community and your veterinarians. And there's a lot of moving parts to increase a program. I touched on it briefly about amending the ordinance to include rabies vaccination reporting from the veterinarians. We found hands down, that's the number one way to increase compliance. The good pet owners will go to the vet, they'll get their vaccination. Even the best pet owner might forget then to license their pet, because now they finished the vet part and it's out of mind. What'll happen with the rabies reporting ordinance is we'll get that data, we'll compare that against our current database to make sure, you know, they have it licensed in the interim. And then we'll send them a billing notice that says, you know, thank you for vaccinating Fluffy. It's time to license Fluffy. And then those also then go on the enforcement report if those folks have not licensed after two or three notices. As a number one way, we can also, if the vets, if the ordinance won't go through, or even if it does go through, we can also provide the vets with paper applications to hand to their clients when they leave the office. We can also, they can also email those to their clients as well. Typically across the board for all of our clients, we've seen on average a 42% increase in licensing. So that depends on a lot of variables. But what we do is efficiencies. We've been doing nothing but this for 25 years. We don't do side businesses. We don't have other sidelines of, of income for Pet Data. It's all animal licensing. And so we know the best ways to send out notices, the best wording on those notices, the best ways to encourage folks to come into compliance.
And it does sound like you send out renewal notices quite a bit and kind of follow up since Fluffy's been living there for three years and it's a three-year pet. So probably year four, they're going to need to get relicensed. So that's something that you follow up on as well.
Correct. And so we'll follow your ordinance. So if they have a one-year license or if your ordinance allows for a two or three-year license, we follow up and send those renewals according to license expiration. And then if they are due for vaccination with the license, the notice will also say that as well.
Great. And Marty, do we send out renewal letters right now through the city?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And, you know, do we really kind of get compliance or is it kind of hit and miss or how does that work?
I'd say, I would say hit and miss is, is a good term for it, yeah.
Great. Or do you feel that Pet Data will be able to kind of raise our repeat license fees?
Our license fees are really in line with all our neighboring cities. So I would be hesitant to raise the individual price.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
We are certainly hopeful that our total revenue number by an increased number of licenses will happen.
Yeah, I said license fees. I should have said licensors, just kind of making sure that they're, they're re-upping Fluffy every time. So, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Horvath?
I forgot my question, so I'm gonna pass for now.
Okay, we'll come back. Councilmember Narin?
Thank you, Mayor Brand. So this means, I get a lot of people talking about this pet licensing thing. They don't get actually any mail. They have to go proactively down to City Hall. So this will proactively send out and help people to license their pets on a year-over-year basis so we can get increased compliance. That's the goal, right?
Yeah, so the, the noticing that would happen as the ordinance stands now would only occur from our, our database. If they've never licensed their pet before, no, we wouldn't know to send them a notice. If we did that update with the ordinance requiring the veterinarians to report, then yeah, we could catch, or make available to, to others that maybe haven't licensed before. They could be sent a bill.
Yeah, I know a lot of people who have issues with the licensing and they just end up not doing it or renewing it because they don't get anything. And we lose out a lot, lot of licensing. And I know a lot of people are supportive of this because where the money goes to. And over the years, I've seen from the, when we allowed dogs in parks to going from $90,000, I think, a year to like $50,000, like almost half of what we used to collect over on a year-over-year basis. So I know Torrance has something with the vets as well. They're very successful at getting those numbers up. Do we have any programs to go to dog parks, parks and get the education out there to get this licensing to moving forward?
We would have to coordinate that with animal control and, you know, check on their availability to, to do that. But that's an option.
Okay, so and animal control is under the police department, which is under parking enforcement, correct?
Right. The officers are, are dual function. They, they do both parking enforcement and animal control.
Right, okay. You know, I ask these questions because a lot of, I get these questions all the time. People, they're confused. They go down to try to pay something or they send something in, it gets rejected or something. And so I'd love to get some good cleanup on this. I know dogs in parks are a big deal with the waste that's produced. It's, it's, it's something that we sorely need and it's great, fantastic to hear that we're getting some good efficiency here. So I'm, I'm very happy to see this moving forward. And I know when we started talking this a while ago, I was a big fan of this. So anything to help our staff move this forward, because I know I've gotten a lot of questions on this before. So, thank you.
And just the most obvious efficiency will be the ability to license online.
Right, that's huge.
Yep.
That's huge. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lowenstein?
Yeah, I applaud that. As a pet owner, dog owner, having to write a check is very nineties or eighties-ish. So, thank you. I was actually going to ask the question about whether or not they'd run any campaigns to increase the number of licenses in cities. Just to clarify, the bottom point on this, on this slide is the city of Redondo Beach retains ownership of data. Our pet owner data is not going to be sold to any third parties, anybody selling anything or, or any services, correct?
Correct. It will not happen. The, the part of our, our philosophy as Pet Data is that we would never do that. It's in our contract as well and it's, it's just something that we've never felt was good business. We don't want to make our revenue off of the backs of pet owners and pet coupons. We're in this as a partnership with the city to increase your compliance and not to sell dog food coupons.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Okay. Neil, did you mean to still have your hand up? I believe so, I think.
No, sorry, I'll take it down. Although that was a great question there, Councilman Lowenstein. Thank you. No, sorry, I'll, I'll take it down. Although that was a great question there, Councilmember Lowenstein, thank you.
So, Councilmember Imby, did you want to speak again?
Just, just a point. This is just the beginning of what we need to do to kind of revamp our whole system. We're depending a lot on rescue people and we need to be able to, I think we need to kind of look into the whole system, animal control system, what we're doing. And this is a, I'm, I'm okay with this as a first step to kind of increase our efficiencies, but then we got to keep pushing on this particular topic on how we're going to fix the whole system on how this works. Because, you know, I know that enforcement's a problem, maybe how, with the sufficiencies to be use it, use it to be able to get more enforcement. Because remember, we allow dogs in parks and one of the things we said is that they, they are licensed. Dogs have to be licensed to be in the park, but one of the things we didn't, we're failing at is enforcement. So just want to kind of move forward with that idea that this is just the beginning of the conversation.
Okay, Councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, so I just wanted to touch base on the idea of creating the ordinance. That's been mentioned a couple of times as it relates to veterinarians and, and the rabies. You know, that, that way we, we create a situation where notification would automatically go out to people who have just gotten their pet vaccinated, their pet vaccinated with the rabies vaccination. What is, assuming we approve this tonight, what is the next step then? Do we, do we need to make a referral to bring back an ordinance? Or can the motion tonight include direction to, to bring back an ordinance in that direction? I just, I just want to understand what it is we need to do.
I don't think I have the answer to that, but we could certainly start working on that.
My understanding is that, this is Christine, my understanding is that we would have to, you can right now, you would have to make a referral to bring back or lost to research.
Got it. Okay, could, could the referral be a part of the motion, Christine, or does that have to be during referrals later on this evening?
It, it should be part of referrals later this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, are there any public comments on?
Let's see here. No, I have no Zoom comments and I have no ecomments. No, no, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'm telling you, I did approve the agreement. That's the motion you need, Marnie.
Yep.
Okay, is there a second to approve this?
Yes, second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Horvath, second by Councilmember Narenheim. I'll do a roll call book. Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Imby.
Aye.
Okay, well, there you go. Thanks, Anne, for joining us and thank you, Marnie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, discussion and possible action regarding the design alternatives for Manhattan Beach Boulevard, Aviation Boulevard to Inglewood Avenue project, job number 41190, Ted Smart, our Public Works Director. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. With me tonight, Jean Kim, our City Traffic Engineer is going to make a presentation to you. But this is our capital improvement project to resurface Manhattan Beach Boulevard, as you said, between Inglewood and Aviation. And as part of that project, the City Council asked us to look into integrating bicycle facilities onto the street. You've given us some direction to preferences to look at class four facilities. We've gone through that exercise and are seeking some direction from the council tonight on how to proceed forward. With that, I'll turn it over to Jean for the presentation.
All right, meeting Mayor and Council, my presentation tonight, as Ted mentioned, is a discussion and possible action for some design alternatives that we have in store for Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So as part of that, I'll provide some updates as to where we are with the current project and then provide those design alternatives that the council can consider. So the current capital improvement program, the CIP, includes approximately $1.7 million in available funds for the design and construction of the Manhattan Beach Boulevard resurfacing project. The project is approximately a mile in length along Redondo Beach, excuse me, along Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And it's within the city limits. So it's from Aviation Boulevard to the west and then Inglewood Avenue to the east. As part of the project, we're, we're looking to provide some street improvements that include repaving, restriping of the roadway, some curb ramp upgrades, traffic signal modifications at the intersection of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Dow Avenue. And of course, consideration of some landscaping and irrigation alternatives for the raised medians we have along the roadway segment. As of July of last year, the council approved a design services contract to Cannon Corporation to carry out these design requirements. And so we've been working closely with Cannon in kind of going back and forth and looking at different alternatives and possible, considering different impacts, if you will, and benefits of the, of the three bicycle alternatives that I'm going to be presenting tonight. Of course, as part of this project, the major objective is to install bicycle facilities along the corridor, corridor to remain kind of consistent with the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan. What the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan initially calls for is a class two facility. And a class two facility is, of course, just a standard bike lane, the longitudinal bike lane stripe that you see on several roadways throughout our city. And so they're effectively five to six feet of bike lanes that was initially proposed as part of the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan. Now, as part of my update to the City Council, I'm going to be going over three conceptual alternatives, namely Bike Facility Alternative 1, Alternative 2A and 2B. And then I'll briefly talk about where we're at with the traffic signal modification and the landscape and irrigation portion of the project. Just real quick, going over the vicinity map, Manhattan Beach Boulevard is one of the primary east-west streets that we have within the city of Redondo Beach. It's classified as a principal arterial roadway. As mentioned before, it's between two major north-south arterials, Aviation Boulevard to the west and Inglewood Avenue to the east. It's a major connector for, within the city, especially access to the Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center. And of course, some of the commercial centers that we have to the north of Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And of course, the residential streets and areas that we have to the south of Manhattan Beach Boulevard. The roadway currently provides two travel lanes in the eastbound direction and then two to three travel lanes in the westbound direction. There's landscaped raised center medians, there's protected left turn pockets along the corridor. And of course, there's on-street parking along the roadway segment. It's between Aviation Boulevard and Redondo Beach Avenue. So segueing directly into our first bike facility alternative. You know, as, as part of our efforts in collaboration with Cannon, we did put together three design alternatives, 1, 2A and 2B, for the council's consideration tonight. We're going to be looking at, trying to get some direction from the council on which alternative that staff and the design team should be moving forward with. And so I'm going to start that off by talking about Bike Facility Alternative 1. Now, this alternative proposes a class two facility along the entire segment of the roadway. So from Aviation Boulevard to Inglewood Avenue in both directions is what we're proposing, a class two facility. So it would be a standard bike lane, approximately five to six feet in width, installed adjacent either to the existing curb face or where the on-street parking is. Some things to keep in mind. So the impacts due to this alternative include, they, they can be as minor as lane width reductions. And so some of the lane widths that we have in existing may be reduced, maybe from 13 feet to 12 feet to 11 feet. But the more significant impact that we're anticipating with the installation of a class two bike facility is that there's a, there's a large chunk of the roadway that we're not going to be able to find the real estate to install a five to six-foot bike lane. And so there is a significant median island width reduction that we are, we will have to consider to accommodate this alternative. The, the class two bike facility, of course, is also unbuffered. And so that can be considered as largely unfavorable, given that the posted speed limit on Manhattan Beach Boulevard is 40 miles an hour and Manhattan Beach Boulevard is also designated as a truck route within our city. The second alternative we have here is the Bike Facility Alternative 2A. Now, this alternative proposes, now it's written as a class four, but it's technically a buffered class two bicycle facility along the project segment. So what that means is we're looking at a six-foot bike lane plus a three-foot buffer distance from the travel lane to basically the edge, the outside edge of the bicycle facility. So this buffered class two is proposed along the entire westbound direction and about half of the eastbound direction. And so the entire westbound direction spanning from Inglewood to Aviation, we're, we're considering a buffered class two. And then in the eastbound direction, it would be a standard class two from Aviation to Redondo Beach Avenue and then Redondo Beach Avenue to Inglewood would be a buffered class, buffered class two. So how will we accomplish this? Well, the, the westbound direction is going to be able to accomplish this with the removal of a westbound through lane. As currently, the westbound direction has three through lanes. And so by the removal of the westbound through lane, we're able to incorporate a buffered bike lane in the westbound direction. Want to kind of caveat that by saying that, you know, we took a look at initial review of volumes, as did Cannon. And so the initial review of the volumes that we've seen has shown that a lane reduction in the westbound direction would not significantly impact traffic operations. However, I'd also like to add that if this alternative is selected, that additional traffic analysis would need to be conducted to verify that the reduction of the westbound through lane is feasible for traffic operations within this corridor. In the eastbound direction, class two facility would be unbuffered. So a standard class two facility from Aviation to Redondo Beach Avenue. And then Redondo Beach Avenue to Inglewood would be a buffered, six-foot, a three-foot buffer. Now, this is largely due to the fact that the portion of Aviation to Redondo Beach Avenue has eastbound on-street parking. And so the impacts associated with this alternative, you know, there is a reduction in the westbound through lane. So we're looking at potential traffic flow and operational impacts. However, the, the bigger thing that we would have to take a look at with this alternative, oh, that would be it actually. So it would be Aviation to Redondo Beach Avenue is a standard class two, unbuffered. And then from Redondo Beach Avenue to Inglewood would be buffered. Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself. Now, the class, the Bike Facility Alternative 2B is simply put, the same as Alternative 2A, with the exception that the eastbound on-street parking between Aviation to Redondo Beach Avenue would be removed to incorporate a buffered class two bicycle facility. So with this removal, we can install a buffered class two facility throughout the entire segment between Aviation Boulevard and Inglewood Avenue in both directions on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. This alternative can technically be presented as the most favorable bike facility alternative, looking at a standpoint from providing a buffered bicycle facility along the segment of this project to provide the additional safety for the type of roadway that we'll be servicing. However, you know, it, it still carries the same effects or the same impacts, if you will, as Alternative 2A, except we'd also have to consider additional impacts associated with the loss of parking on the south side between Aviation and Redondo Beach Avenue. As mentioned before, is included as part of the complete design package. Cannon is also looking at traffic signal modification. The project is looking to provide a protected left turn phase along the east and westbound directions of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Dow. And of course, along with that, we look into upgrading traffic signal equipment at the intersection. We'll look at relocating some of the poles, accommodations for upgrading the ADA curb ramps and things of that nature. So as of now, the early survey work has been completed. However, as a design of the traffic signal and its ultimate location is largely contingent on the roadway geometry and what roadway geometry we decide to move forward with, this design effort is currently on standby until we decide which alternative we're going to move forward with. The landscaping and irrigation design, this is also provided as part of the project. The design will look into modifications within the existing raised center medians and frontage road median. Currently, there's just been minor preliminary work that's been completed, which includes initial discussions with West Basin regarding their interest in the addition of a recycled water, the purple, the purple line, if you will, for the landscaping within the media and services to other customers. However, this portion of the project, similar to the traffic signal design portion, would require roadway geometric design to be finalized before, before proceeding. So I'm just going to kind of go over and capture, at least from a bike facility standpoint, some of the design and construction benefits, disadvantages and impacts. So for Bike Facility Alt 1, which is the class two facility, the five to six-foot bike lane along the entire corridor, from a design-construction standpoint, it, it probably poses the least amount of potential traffic operations impact because we're not reducing or removing any travel lanes. However, in order to incorporate the class two, we would be looking at significant median take and landscaping impacts. And that would vary throughout the entire corridor. There's some segments where we're not taking, we're, we're taking maybe all of a foot, two feet, and there's other segments where we can take, I believe it's up to four to five feet or so. From a safety standpoint, one of staff's concerns is that there is a potential safety concern within unprotected, unbuffered class two facility that will be installed on an arterial, arterial roadway, excuse me, that has a 40 mile per hour posted speed limit and is also designated as a truck route. The second alternative that I talked about was Bike Facility Alternative 2A. This is the one, once again, westbound direction. We can remove a travel lane and install a protected class two facility. So a six-foot bike lane plus a three-foot buffer away from traffic. And then that's in the westbound direction. And then in the eastbound direction, going from Aviation to Redondo Beach Avenue would be a standard class two facility to preserve the parking that's available. And then from Redondo Beach Avenue to Inglewood would be a buffered bike lane, bike lane facility. So of course, this would have greater potential traffic operations impact because we're going from three westbound travel lanes to two westbound travel lanes. However, from a median and landscaping impact, there would, there will still be slight impacts, but they would, our understanding is that they would not be as significant as the Alt 1 alternative. From a safety standpoint, we're proposing a buffered bicycle facility along the majority of the project segment. So the westbound direction will be buffered, eastbound direction will be unbuffered from Aviation to Redondo Beach Avenue and then Redondo Beach Avenue to Inglewood would be buffered. And then, of course, Bike Facility Alt 2B, same impact in the westbound direction. We're going from three lanes to two lanes. However, now, because in the eastbound direction, we're considering the removal of eastbound parking to provide buffered bike lanes in the eastbound direction, that's another consideration of impact that the council should be aware of. Very minimal median reduction, probably very similar to what we'll see in Alternative 2A in regards to median and landscaping impacts. And then from a safety standpoint, Alt 2A had a portion that was unbuffered, majority buffered. Now, with 2B, we're looking at fully buffered along the entire project segment. So the recommendation for tonight that I present to the council is for a discussion and possible action regarding the design alternatives for Manhattan Beach Boulevard, Aviation Boulevard to Inglewood Avenue, project job number 41190. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. And of course, from Cannon's team, we also have Gary and Adrian. We're also available should the council have additional questions for them. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jean, for that. Let's go to the council. Councilmember Imby.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. And I'm looking at your maps and it's not showing me what about the eastern side of, of Manhattan Beach Boulevard next to, you know, El Gaucho Market and all that. Where would the bike lanes stop or how, because that's not kind of addressed on here. Would it go all the way to Inglewood Avenue?
I, I believe it, it may. That's, that's one of the design considerations that we can look at. Because ultimately, at least going in the westbound direction, we would have, if, if we are moving forward with any of the alternative twos, and since we're reducing the lane, we'd have to figure out an appropriate location for the merge lane to go in. And then it, it ultimately would be at the best design speed and tie-in location in either direction. Because that's kind of how we terminate and add bikes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have a chance to revisit that once we get the design back. We're just kind of trying to figure out where our concept is on that. Okay. I, I definitely do not imagine that the people on Manhattan Beach Boulevard are going to want to give up their parking. I did read the letter from Grace Pang in which she says to, to choose bikes over parking. But that is a, it's got a apartment building, it's got a lot of, two, two on a lot. It's got, it's, I've rarely seen that, that area, that section without people. It's got, it's, I've rarely seen that, that area, that section without people being parked on it, that I can't imagine that that wouldn't be a huge problem with them. And I know that Grace had said in her letter in the, in the blue folder items that, that it's a terrifying stretch from Trader Joe's in Manhattan Beach, up Manhattan, going eastbound on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. But I've, I've ridden my bike on that road coming from the beach. And I don't find it quite as scary as, as she does. And I think that a class two just painted would be fine along that, because we don't have to give up parking if we just do that. Am I hearing that correctly?
Right. If it's just the alternative one, which is just a class two installation, then we can maintain the parking in that segment.
But if you do two A, you would, you would still do a, just paint from, from Aviation to Redondo Ave.
Yes.
And then you could do protected from Redondo Ave eastbound.
Yes.
And as I, I'm not a big fan of giving up too much of my landscaping, especially if I can get purple pipes down the center median, because I want to make sure I have as much landscaping as I can. And also between Johnston and Dow, there's a very large, I guess it would be a lane. It's actually a lane that could accommodate parking, but there's no parking allowed there now. And it has a sidewalk with just some trees and kind of not, not very pleasant landscaping. I think there's an opportunity from that section to create a really nice walkway pedestrian experience with a protected bike lane for that neighborhood to kind of go around there. Because if you look at it, it's, it's all a bunch of mishmash of back, of black walls. And then there's a few little trees that with irrigation could do a lot better. And if we kind of could, I think there's an opportunity there to really beautify that section in there. And just for those of you that aren't too familiar with that area, Redondo Ave goes into Vale. And there's actually a bike path, the big bike path that goes along north Redondo, goes through White Circle, ends up at Vale. And then, and then there's no bike path between Vale, between White Circle and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And then there's a further bike path that continues down Redondo Ave towards the Greenline Station. So that would go a long way to kind of, kind of connect all these roadways to be able to do the bicycles. So anyway, those, excuse me, did I miss anything from our conversation before? I think those were the big concerns on there. So I guess what I'm saying is I would, I would recommend that we head towards the alternative two A bike facility. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember MD, two A. Councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, I'm gonna slightly disagree with Councilwoman MD. I say go big or go home. And, you know, we keep talking about improving bike lanes throughout the city and, and improving bike lanes to the point where anybody feels comfortable using them. So I recognize that, you know, bikers who are more savvy, like Councilwoman MD or her husband, or, you know, the road warriors may feel safer on, on a road like Manhattan Beach Boulevard. But the fact that the, you know, the speed limit's 40 miles per hour, the fact that it's a, it's a truck route, you know, I, I would rather create safer bike lanes for people. And so my, my initial thoughts are to, to explore two B and then try to figure out if there's any solutions for the loss of parking. I'm, you know, I, I recognize that some of the landscaping would have to go away or we would have to possibly narrow lanes, you know, and it looked like the lanes were a variety of sizes, 11 feet, 12 feet. Jean, I'm curious, if we were to take away a full westbound lane, why not create a dual, a dual direction, class one track on that westbound side? And, and then effectuate the changes throughout the, the rest of the lanes and the median to, to adjust for that, you know? Then it would be a completely protected cycle lane like, like Harbor Drive. You would have dual direction, just like Harbor Drive. And, you know, you'd be still losing that one lane as, as you're discussing, but you'd, you'd clearly have to, you know, make some adjustments and narrow. I'm just wondering why that was not a potential thought process, since it seems that there's, there's an ability to do more on the westbound side than the eastbound. I'm sorry, on the northbound side, which is traveling westbound. Yeah.
I, I would, I would say that just, I mean, without, without having really delved into what, why that wasn't a consideration, the first thing that pops into my mind would kind of be the costs, the significant cost for creating that separate cycle track, plus the median, plus the reduction of median and shifting, and then consideration for, if I, if I recall correctly, based on these alternatives that we currently have right now, for, I, all three alternatives, alternative one, two A and two B, we're trying to be very aware of the constructed design and construction budget that we currently have in place. And it, the design, the design team probably look at the numbers a little bit better than we have, but I believe that we're pretty close to that figure and something of that magnitude, and this is just off the top of my head, something of that magnitude would be a significant cost, so much more than just what we're trying to do as part of our alternatives here.
Well, and that's, that's an understandable thought process, but, you know, maybe it's, if, if it's something that would make better sense for the long term, right? And for the quality of life and the ability for people to get around using, you know, alternatives to, to cars, you know, then it's one of those things where maybe we would need to go chase down, you know, additional measure M funds or something to, to try to effectuate that. So I wouldn't want to just not look at it. If it's the better decision, you know, then it just means we have to find additional monies to make it happen. So just, just some comments there. As part of this, I can't remember if it was in this report or another one, so I apologize. But did this also discuss reconfiguring the, the traffic signal and the lanes at Inglewood Boulevard going eastbound so that it would allow for a U-turn? Because right now, there's this wonky space where people can't turn left off of traveling eastbound on Manhattan Beach Boulevard into that shopping center at the corner of Inglewood and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And you can't make a U-turn either. So was that in this report or was that something that we were discussing as part of another report? I'm just.
I, I don't think that was discussed as part of.
Okay.
One of those projects.
All right, sorry, I'm, I'm mixing up a variety of things then. So yeah, my, my initial thoughts again, oh, and the, the class four, the buffer, does the buffer include vertical like delineators, pylons? Or is it just, is it just a striped buffer zone?
As of now, they do not include the delineators, just a three foot buffer.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, that's all I got for now.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Horvath. I would point out that, you know, headed west, once you cross Aviation Boulevard, you are now into Manhattan Beach. And from what I know about that, there's not a lot of places to, to widen or make room for some sort of bike path lane. You've got Trader Joe's right there, parking right there. Be interesting to see what Manhattan Beach has planned for bike lane along that stretch, Manhattan Beach Boulevard. You know, connectivity is important. We're headed to the beach. You know, I just don't see how it's, you know, building a class one is going to be consistent with what they have planned, which is nothing as far as I can tell. Anyway, Councilmember Lowenstein.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Brand. I actually lean to two A as well, for the reason that if you do eliminate parking, you're going to push parking onto the side streets, and people are going to get really mad, not only on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, but on those side streets. And they're not great for parking to begin with. So you're asking for trouble. I think it's great that we're doing buffered. I would like us to look at delineate, delineator markers, because I think that gives people maybe a false sense of security, but more security, because that's a fast street. And anybody riding a bike on that wants to feel a little bit more protected. And also, if it's protected east of Redondo Beach Boulevard, that's great. And I think you said, Jean, that it would be protected on the west side or on the north side as well, too, of, of the street going west?
Yes, with the, with the removal of the number three lane.
Okay, so will it be concrete protection or will it be the blocks that sit in, in the roadway like lane marker type?
No, it, it would just be a three foot painted buffer. And then we would consider the use of delineators within that three foot painted buffer.
Okay, so we're not even, it's not a true protected, then I guess, it's more like a buffered on the, on the north side.
Right.
Okay. Well, again, I think it's great. I mean, I, I know, I'm sure people ride to Northrup or they ride to our Aviation Park campus. Hopefully for one day, having a smooth pull up there. And the gym and the performing arts center. So I think it's great. I think, you know, I like Christian's idea. I just don't know if we can do it quickly enough, raise the capital quickly enough in order to make this process go, because it was supposed to happen, I think, last year, if I'm not mistaken. And so it's already delayed another year. If we can, if we can do it quickly, I don't know what it would take to do that. I think it'd be great, but, you know, I'm a little bit skeptical that we can raise that kind of capital quickly. So that's a major project. So I would lean, if we can't raise the capital, I would say I'd lean to two A and not take away parking. So that's it.
Okay, are there any comments from the public?
Let's see, nope. No, no, zoom or e-comment. Oh, wait a minute. You got someone. Zaino Baji Jr.
Thank you. Just a quick question for staff. Is there a, kind of going along with what people have said, if you, we really want to promote biking and getting out of cars and the like, is there any way to reduce the speed of the cars on that, reduce the speed limit? Or does that not, you know, remove it from the designation as a truck route from 40 to 30 or even 35? Because we know people drive faster than the speed limit.
May I, may I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, you bring up a very excellent point. And typically, when we have, we staff, city engineers, when there are roadway geometric modifications, there is an opportunity, because of the roadway changes, like an installation of a bike lane, to reassess the speed limit on that roadway, because that's technically considered a major change to the roadway, especially if we're dropping like a two A, two B alternative, when we're removing a full-blown, full-blown westbound lane, then the roadway geometry has now completely been altered. And so that does give us an opportunity to go out there and do what we call an engineering and traffic survey to reassess what the speed limit could be.
Thank you. Mr. Kim.
My comment would be then add supportive reduction of the speed limit there as well.
Okay, and now ecomments.
No further public comments.
Nope.
Okay, there are no hands up. Be good to have a motion on how to proceed. Councilmember MD.
Make a motion, or you proceed, proceed with option two A.
Two A, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I'll do roll call vote, Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Brand.
Aye.
And Councilmember MD.
Aye.
Okay, well, there you go, two A. Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Ted. All right, entry, possible action regarding the Budget and Finance Commission's request the preparation of a workers' compensation study for the fire department. This report associated with this item is provided, prepared by Marnie. So Marnie Ruil, our finance director, go ahead, Marnie.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. At your December 15th council meeting, you requested that the Budget and Finance Commission's November 24th letter be brought to you tonight as a discussion item. The letter stems from the commission's discussions regarding the self-insurance program fund in the context of both the county fire feasibility study and the funds negative fund balance. During one of these discussions, the actuary who prepares the workers' comp and general liability studies was questioned as to whether or not he could prepare a workers' comp study for just the fire department. Because he responded that he would be able to do so, staff obtained a quote and the commission wrote a letter to you requesting that such a report be prepared. So should council want to proceed with such a study? The contract with Glicksman Consulting would need to be amended and a budget modification for the $1,500 cost would need to be approved. And since I think the letter pretty much speaks for itself, that's all I have for my report, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Marnie. Councilmember Brand.
Yes, I'd just like to make a motion to approve the, approve the contract and the budget modification as noted by Marnie.
Second. Okay, there was a motion and a second, second by Councilmember Lowenstein. Anything else, John?
That's it.
Councilmember Narenheim.
Thank you, Mayor Brand.
Yeah, why does this require a budget modification since this contract is under $15,000 and it could just be used out of existing, the existing budget?
Staff could be directed to, to find the money within the self-insurance funds budget, but it's not, you know, currently an, an item budgeted there.
It requires a contract amendment. We did not have him under contract to do this work. So, you know, that's the part that's going to take a little bit of time.
Okay, is that correct? Motion covers that.
Yeah, we would have to bring that back, bring that contract back to you for approval.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like it's going to take much time to, to get this work done in terms of contract approval or contract change, and then you come right to us and I, I just make, you know, recommend that come back to find existing funds if you can within, within the current budget. But if you need to modify the existing budget and do a budget amendment, we can do that too. But I would highly recommend that we could find existing $1,500 somewhere to, to do this. So that's my only comment. And thank you very much for, for approving this and bringing this forward. And I really want to thank the Budget Finance Commission for looking into this. They've, last meeting was, was very active, and Marnie, you held in there until late. So thank you. They're getting a lot of good work done at that Budget Finance Commission, some good commissioners on, on there, making things happen. So thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment to this item?
Yes, Eugene Solomon.
Hey, Mr. Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. Thank you, Councilmember Brand for your motion and Councilmember Lowenstein for the second, just here to appear as in support of this from the Budget and Finance Commission. And thank Marnie for getting a letter to you all for approval. Grateful for the opportunity. If the $1,500 is amended, or the budget is amended to include that, to dig deeper into all of this. The actuary at that meeting made a really great presentation. There were lots of great questions. And I would encourage any or all of you to review that meeting as well. It was really informative listening to the actuary at that meeting. So thank you again, Marnie, for bringing him to us. And thank you, councilmembers, for the opportunity.
Hey, any more public comment?
No, that's it, Mayor, no e-commerce.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor in a second. I know there'll roll call vote, Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Brand.
Aye.
And Councilmember.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Last item for discussion, discussion, possible action regarding potential municipal code changes for sale use and distribution of balloons. Public Works Director Ted Simar, were you going to lead this off?
I will. Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, our staff member that would have been presenting to you, Geraldine Trevetti, is unavailable because of a power outage from the winds up in the area that she lives in. is unavailable because of a power outage from the winds up in, uh, the area that she lives in. But in brief, um, this is an item that we started in January a year ago when the council started to take up conversations about limiting the use of certain plastics and balloons in the city. And on the fourteenth of January, uh, the council approved the limitation on plastics, but continued conversations on, uh, balloons. And at that point, the council approved an ordinance that restricted the release of any helium-filled balloons, irrelevant of the type of material that was there. Um, the council then asked us to come back in August to further discuss the type of balloons, uh, sale, use and distribution of those balloons. Uh, we came back to you in August, at which time the council did discuss the use and distribution of foil, metallized and Mylar balloons, but, uh, made a referral to continue the item and come back to you in January of this year. So we are back to you now, um, as part of that direction. You asked us to check the language and confirm the language that both the cities of Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach are using. Uh, they do restrict the sale, um, distribution and use of foil, metallized, uh, and Mylar balloons. Um, they, with exception to the city of Hermosa Beach where they changed the language instead of it saying it's just helium balloons, it is anything that's lighter than air that would cause it to, it to rise. Um, so what we're seeking from you tonight is direction on, um, on your consideration for those balloons. Again, the sale, the use and distribution of metallized, uh, and foil balloons. Um, and ironically, as we were preparing in last Tuesday's city council meeting, we had a power glitch for any of you that are in that part of the city. Um, as we scrambled to see what had happened, uh, we found out that there was a transformer or multi-transformer explosion in North Redondo, uh, actually in Hermosa Beach adjacent to North Redondo that had a power glitch. It affected ninety-six hundred Edison customers overall. Um, the glitch was a short duration for the majority of those customers, but seventeen hundred of those customers were actually out of power for over an hour. Um, so again, what we're seeking from you tonight is your further consideration uh, for the sale, use and distribution of these types of balloons. And if you give us that direction tonight, we can come back to you with an ordinance, uh, for your consideration to make that restriction.
Thank you, Ted. You did not say what the cause of that outage was.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was a Mylar balloon that was released. It parked in the lines and caused those three transformers to explode.
A balloon?
Yes.
A balloon. Caused all those people to have, uh, electronic equipment destroyed, be without power, and Edison to incur significant expense because of a balloon. Okay, Councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and, and it made the news that night. You know, the chopper was flying over and showing all the dark houses after our meeting, so, uh, I couldn't be in more support of this. I, I can't remember why we delayed, but, uh, but I would, uh, uh, I, I, I would make, uh, the motion for us to, to bring back, uh, the language changes in the ordinance to add Mylar balloons. Uh, and thank you to our fire department for responding to that, uh, that issue as well last week.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember MD?
Um, obviously I have no problem with the banning of the Mylar balloons. What I do have a problem with is the no person shall use or distribute latex balloons filled with air. And then it says helium or lighter-than-air gas. Why can't we have them filled with air? So that means no balloon arches, um, and which is heavily used at the school district, uh, in PTA events, um, you know, parties. That's, that's used quite often. So why, so why do we still have air in there? I mean...
That can be taken out.
Are, are, are you referring to letter D in the?
No, I'm referring to C.
C.
I get why we don't want to release latex balloons. We don't want a bunch of balloons, you know, trashing the place. That's fine, that they can't release it, but no, no person shall use or distribute, but used, uh, latex balloons filled with air. So in other words, no balloon animals at parties. Um.
And Councilmember, that, you're right, that's the language that's actually used in Manhattan Beach and Hermosa. Um, and as the mayor said, we don't necessarily have to do, uh, air for latex balloons. It's, I mean, the target here is looking at metallized Mylar or foil, uh, balloons. Those are the ones that are, that seem to be causing the biggest issue with the electrical lines.
And not have, uh, don't allow, um, balloon art or, or arches or any of that kind of thing that's, um, I, I, I'm not seeing any evidence that that's what's causing the problems with, um, you know, electricity. And if it's done with the profession, if it's done with that kind of setting, I really don't think that any of those professionals are out, uh, releasing these balloons into the ocean either or allowing it to get into our ocean. So I just have a problem with that, with, with C, the way it's written. Other than that, I'm fine.
Good. We can make the motion to come back without that part of it.
Okay.
The amendment, whatever. Uh, Councilmember Lowenstein?
Yeah, someone who on September thirtieth, twenty-ninth and not, power knocked out. I lost more than a thousand dollars worth of appliance. And that's not even including, um, that's not even including my refrigerator freezer getting knocked out. My neighbor down the street lost six thousand dollars worth of electronic equipment. I'm pretty sure this was all related to a Mylar balloon and a large explosion of a transformer near there. I, I wholeheartedly support this. If Laura wants to take out air, I'm okay with that as well, too. Um, so I, I'd second it with a friendly amendment to take out air out of, uh, number C, if, uh, if, uh, as a second.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, there's a motion by Councilmember Horvath who is now seconded by Councilmember Lowenstein, if you take out that portion of measure C that includes just air into Mylar balloons.
Well, it's air and the latex balloons.
Latex, not Mylar.
All right, latex balloons. So that's clear?
Yep.
Okay, so you'd have to come back with a, with a ordinance. And we can refine it at that point, too, if need be, so. Is there any comments from the public?
Yes. Craig, um, Cottler. Craig?
Good evening, Mayor Brand and councilmembers and staff. My name is Craig Cottler and I'm speaking on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation's South Bay chapter. And just a quick comment on the air discussion you just had. I can tell you that I've been at outdoor events, uh, in particular, the most recent, um, example of this was the Manhattan Beach Hometown Fair, where I've seen air-filled balloons blowing around that got loose. And I'm not so worried about professionals. Um, our concerns are more with the unintended, uh, release of balloons when, um, like kids or whatever, just let go of them or they break away. I think the professionals usually secure those well. But latex balloons are not biodegradable, as many people have misunderstood. They contain, um, chemicals that, uh, to achieve desired thickness, rate of drying, other properties as well as pigments and dyes. And so they aren't simply biodegradable. And during many, um, beach cleanup events, we have picked up, uh, latex balloons that are just sitting slowly deteriorating. And when they get in the water, um, they, they do not degrade. It's even worse in a marine environment. And, um, the language examples for Manhattan and Hermosa do include the air for that reason. And, um, yeah, I'm not, I don't want to be a party pooper, but, um, I also don't want to be killing wildlife and littering the environment. Um, the lighter-than-air gases that Hermosa included, uh, believe it or not, there are alternatives such as hot air, hydrogen, water vapor, ammonia, methane, coal gas, acetylene, hydrogen cyanide, neon nitrogen and other items. So, you know, there, right now, there's a hydrogen or a helium shortage, so who knows what alternatives might be used that have even a more intense impact. Um, I don't need to say anything about the Mylar balloons. I think that discussion was robust and complete. And I have noticed new balloons in Hermosa Beach that are clear and helium-filled with confetti and other items inside the balloon, which makes that even worse if that's outside and littering the environment. So I think the air component is important. But I understand, um, Councilmember MD's comments and, um, appreciate that, but it's the inadvertent release of these that do a lot of damage and I hope you would leave that element in and adopt language similar to Hermosa Beach, which was virtually identical to Manhattan Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Craig.
Okay, and no, um, ecomments.
Okay. Thanks, Your Honor. Um, it sounds like Mr. Cottler is suggesting lighter-than-air language versus just helium. Anyway, there's a.
He does say that. It says helium or lighter-than-air gas.
There you go, Craig.
It does say that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember MD, uh, there's a motion on the floor with a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Brand.
Aye.
And Councilmember.
Aye.
Okay, there you go. So you got your direction there, Ted. I guess you'll come back, uh, the next, uh, couple meetings with the, with that order.
Yes, we'll be working with the attorney's office to drop the ordinance and bring that to you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, next up is discussion and possible action regarding the city, city's local emergency pertaining to COVID. News about the vaccine and distribution. So, uh, Joe, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mayor, councilmembers, this is a follow-up to your council meeting of last week. You'll recall that we had a red folder item that was added to the agenda. On Monday of that week, we had, uh, received, uh, word that there was some urgency for us to take action related to MOU with the county. Uh, upon further review of the MOU, there was, uh, an inconsistency between the discussions that had taken place and what the MOU said in terms of who would have what responsibility in terms of operation of a vaccine site. And that MOU specifically was for the Performing Arts Center in Redondo Beach. Um, the MOU, uh, you, the way you left that was that to continue discussions with the county, to, uh, reach out to Beach City's Health District, which we have since done, that, uh, not activate the Performing Arts Center site for, uh, vaccinations until and unless the MOU is modified to more accurately reflect the, the responsibilities, the way it had been drafted was virtually all the responsibility for operation of the site would have been with the city of Redondo Beach. So this, this continues to be a work in progress. There's been, uh, a lot of developments really even as of today. And, uh, we've had good discussions with Beach City's Health District. The, the, the urgency to act on the, you know, that MOU has, uh, also, uh, gone away. It's not the same level of urgency from a county standpoint that we have that MOU in place. Uh, we have given them a markup with some suggested changes. Uh, they are now looking at kind of a, a different strategy. Uh, as the mayor referenced, that the county has modified, um, the tiering for who is eligible to receive vaccines. And the, the process for registering for vaccines, we have that information on our website that it's recently been opened up to all seniors in LA County can register for a COVID-19 vaccine if they're above the age of sixty-five and proof of LA County residency. So we have that information up there. Uh, I also want to, uh, acknowledge the work of Tom Backley and Jaclyn Sun from Beach City's Health District. I, I know they have an update with an application and further discussions that they've had with the county to, uh, move in the direction of a Beach City's district-operated vaccine site, uh, within the South Bay. The Performer Arts Center being one potential site. So maybe with that, I can turn it over to Tom and Jaclyn for, for an update.
Great. Um, lots happening with vaccines. Um, we do have a, a PowerPoint, but I think maybe we'll just jump right into vaccines since you guys have seen that a few times and you're up to speed on the numbers. So, um, as was stated, the county did open up, uh, vaccine eligibility for those sixty-five and over. So they have moved into, uh, one B, as you might imagine. Um, that caused a lot of interest today. We had about one point five, uh, million people in the county looking for about, uh, fifty thousand, uh, vaccines. So you can imagine how that went. Um, and so we just want to give all the information that we can, uh, to anybody that might be watching and we'll continue to uh, communicate how people can sign up for vaccines. So you have the forum is a megapod site, so that's the closest one here. Uh, the other mega, uh, pod site in Janus Hans uh, district is in Downey. So as people are going on the LA County, uh, website, um, probably going to see the most, uh, appointments uh, at the forum. And Dodger Stadium, those are drive-through sites. Those are called megapod sites. And then they're starting to open up, uh, other locations with pharmacies. And so we just urge people to, uh, check our website. We'll give some websites here, uh, tonight, but check bchd.org. Uh, we have some tips, um, on, on how to try to, uh, get appointments. Uh, you have to have an appointment. You can't just show up at the site. We want to be uh, clear on that. It's, it's not to, uh, make light of it, but it's a lot like trying to get concert tickets. You gotta call in, uh, early and, um, in the morning. Sometimes works has been our experience. Uh, as Joe mentioned, we did file a, a formal proposal, uh, with LA County, uh, today for a distribution site here in the South Bay. Uh, we've, we've listed a couple of options, uh, since the Health District would be uh, running this, uh, and, and sort of taking the lead as opposed to, uh, what the county was proposing, which was more of a, a megapod. Uh, we have put forward our, our first priority or sort of first, uh, alternative would be at the Adventureplex site uh, in Manhattan Beach. And so that is, uh, what we've proposed. Uh, we have listed, of course, uh, the Performing Arts Center, uh, as another option, as well as, uh, the Community Center in Hermosa. Uh, but with that, uh, with our facility that we own and operate, uh, up in Manhattan Beach, it was, uh, going to be more efficient uh, for us to run it out of that site, which we think will still, uh, be a good centralized, uh, site and serve the entire Beach City's community. So that's, uh, something that, that we've proposed and we do have the alternatives that I mentioned. We encourage people to, uh, call our hotline at three one oh, three seven four, uh, three four two six, extension two five six. And we can help want people, uh, through getting an appointment. Uh, we don't know when we'll hear back, uh, from the county. We hope that'll be soon and uh, we're ready to get that up and operating here quickly. We would be shifting, uh, some of our resources from the testing that we've been operating for about ten months. At, at the Health District site there on Prospect, we would be shifting some of those testing resources to, uh, handle the vaccine. So we hope that's something that occurs here in the next one to two weeks. We're ready to go. We'd be ready to go, uh, within a week if the county selected, uh, selected us for a distribution site. Uh, Jaclyn, anything that you would like to add or?
Yeah, I just want to give some other resources for folks who are trying to, uh, make appointments. Uh, the county website is www.vaccinatelacounty.com. Uh, that'll direct you to the site that Tom's talking about. For those who don't have internet access, there is a phone line that the county has provided. The number is eight three three five four zero, zero four seven three. Again, it's eight three three, five four zero, zero four seven three. Um, reports of about a thousand calls today. So I would, we would just urge some patients because, uh, though we have opened up to the priority groups in LA County for sixty-five plus, the vaccine allocation is still uh, pretty limited. Um, and I think that, you know, every week the county gets the allocation, so they don't really know, uh, until the week before how many vaccines they're getting until, um, so Wednesday night they get the numbers from the state and that helps in the plan. Uh, so, you know, I, I think that i- it's, it's something where the eligibility is available, but, uh, if you're not able to get an appointment, to just keep trying because more slots are going to be opening up. Um, and I'd also want to make a plug for our Safe in the South Bay, uh, panel, which is on February fourth. Uh, you can sign up at bchd.org where it's a panel of healthcare providers to talk about vaccines. You can get the information that you need. If you have questions, you can submit them in advance. If you have questions, you can submit them in advance. We just want to make sure that we're getting trusted information out, answering folks' questions that if they have any hesitancy with the COVID vaccine, that all of those are being addressed.
Okay, anything else, Tom, Joe?
No, just I think Jaclyn's advice of being patient is probably the best advice, and we're going to continue to push out information, and hopefully we'll be able to bring some vaccine distribution to the South Bay. We'll see how that goes.
And we don't have any additional orders tonight or modifications to the restrictions that are in place, so no resolution or confirmation for anything tonight.
Just an informational item.
Yep.
Councilmember Narenheim?
Thank you, Mayor Brand. Yeah, you know, I've been in contact with the LA County Public Health Department today multiple times. I've talked to them about the 800-833 number, which is essentially the 800 number that has been down. Just so everyone knows, they are fully aware of that. And I believe the website is back up again right now. They fully realize that there's going to be a huge crunch, and they're working on that left, right, and center. You know, they're providing as many accessways as possible. I've talked to them personally, myself, and they are fully aware. One could only imagine how many people are asking for this vaccine right now. With the limited supply, this is going to be happening for a long time. And with the Beach Cities Health District, you know, I really want to thank you guys and implore you for keeping your services open for the Beach Cities residents first and foremost, because, you know, they're the ones who are paying to keep you guys open. I hear it all the time, you know? They want to know, what are they, what are you guys doing for them, so to speak, right? They should get first dibs if they live within your district. I like, you know, as LA County said, they're doing 65 and over, so we should be able to manage that. Joe, I got a question for you. It was brought up to me recently, actually, regarding the pier businesses, the restaurants, who are all doing takeout now and there, because obviously there's no outdoor dining. They're concerned about the people who are showing up to get pickup food that they have ordered, or show up, order food, and leave. They'd like to get, you know, 20, 30 minutes of free parking time. Is that-- I was down there the other day. It was pretty bare and pretty empty, just people dropping, picking stuff up. Is that something we can do for 20, 30 minutes on a temporary basis to get those businesses some help and relief, so their clientele don't get tickets just for simply picking something up, or they feel more comfortable and more able for those customers to go down there and pick things up?
You know, that's something we'd have to kind of map out and bring back to you. I don't think you're talking about 20 minutes free parking for anybody at the pier. Perhaps you're talking about a certain number of spaces designated as, you know, no charge for 20 minutes. That's not something that we could do tonight, but you could give direction for us to bring that back. Stephen Proud, I don't know if you've had any recent contact along those lines.
No, I haven't had anybody contacting me, making that request. I do know the last time that we had just pickup and takeout only, we had a similar kind of request, and we were designating some areas that just were for very short-term parking for pickup and takeout only. So that's kind of how we approached it the last time. If we want to do something more formal, we could.
No, I'm fine with that, exactly what we did last time. I know that helped out a lot, just, you know, real quick, get out of the car, go over there, pick up your order, and come back. I mean, it's-- Anything that can help those businesses down there, those restaurateurs to survive, I think would be super helpful, super helpful.
So we can circle back with Public Works and just kind of talk with them about how we handled it last time. So I think we could probably come up with a solution to just designate a dedicated area for that particular purpose.
Okay, great, fantastic. Joe, also, I think I read an email recently, beginning of February, coming back with the farmers market expansion, and I wanted to confirm that.
That's right, yes. We're bringing that item back to your first meeting in February.
Perfect, great, great to hear. Excellent work. And other than that, I think that is-- that is it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Horvath?
Yeah, a couple of things. Jaclyn, can you-- I wrote you an email earlier, but just could you share the same information you shared with me? Some people were writing today about pre-existing conditions and how do they fit into all of this? Would you just address that for anybody that's watching?
Yeah, those folks with pre-existing conditions are encouraged to get the vaccine. Our chief medical advisor is saying that those of some of those underlying health conditions might be at more risk for severe COVID infections, and so it's a good idea for those folks to especially get vaccinated as well. And a lot of these questions you can find on our website, bchd.org, and they have some really great resources coming out from the CDC as well.
Thank you. And then I wanted to bring up, I've gotten an email today from an individual concerned about the dining decks in Riviera Village and people hanging out and using them. And so I just wanted to bring that up for point of discussion. You know, Joe, I know we had this conversation back in December, early December, but is there anything that we can do to dissuade individuals from just sitting there in those areas or not?
Well, what we would do is we could send the police out to speak to the business owners that are selling them the food. You know, people are buying food to go, sitting there eating, which really is not in the spirit of the county's order. That's not in violation of a city order. That's more in violation of the county stay-at-home order. So we could have those conversations, and I would call on Keith to see if we've done any of that recently. We also could reach out to County Public Health for their follow-up enforcement. I went on a drive through Riviera Village this afternoon, and there are some people out there partaking. It's not a lot. There are some. We do get a few calls related to this. Keith, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
I don't know of any specific calls or complaints lately, but when they come in, we do address them. And if there's something that is causing an issue, we have the same protocol in place. We advise, we document, and then we forward that to public health. And that has not happened with regards to this. That's it.
Well, I would just chime in and say it's the actual restaurateurs that are providing the tables out that people are sitting at, that you don't see happening in Manhattan and in Hermosa, tables are turned over or removed, but you've got eateries providing tables for outdoor dining. That's the complaints I'm hearing from some. So I guess from now on, when I get complaint, I'll just direct them to-- Well, I have been directing them to County Health, directing them apparently to file a report with police as well, if they feel it's in violation. Councilmember MD?
So right now on the vaccination, are you only hearing that they're having them at these places? I'm looking at the website right now, Pomona, Magic Mountain Forum, Downey, Cal Street Norwich, Baboa. What about-- What about having people check with their doctors? Is it because of the fact that they-- the storage issues? Or are your healthcare provider going to have some of the vaccines?
Yeah, that's a real good point. We urge people to contact their physician, contact their doctor, as well as their local pharmacy. So when you go on the LA County website, you will see not just those megapod sites, the large ones that you mentioned that are being run by the county, but you will see pharmacies, you will see Albertson's, Ralph's. And then we also urge people to go through their service provider, through their doctor. Jaclyn, anything to add there?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, as more vaccines, as the supply increases, there are going to be many ways in which people can access. I would say through pharmacies, through their providers, through these pods, through these work sites. And so I think that the county is just offering a lot of different routes and opportunities in which this can happen. Obviously, we're a little constrained with the vaccine supply right now. But there, I think, over 70 locations, last I checked, that are on the county website. They're just prominently showing the mega sites, because they're able to do 4,000 per day. But there are available, there are available locations outside of those sites that are more local as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Narenheim, do you mean to have your hand--
Yeah, I was going to make a motion and just respond to a comment real quick around Riviera Village. You know, it's the west side of the restaurants that gets a lot of attention in Catalina there. Health Department comes out once a week and expects the restaurants, make sure everything's happening. It's generally speaking, people are waiting for their food. And it's, like I said, the west side primarily, that's kind of an issue. So I'll make a motion to receiving file a report and a direct staff to come back for alternatives or come back to solutions similar to what we did before for temporary parking in the pier and the pier area for temporary parking for local restaurant tour, restaurant food pickup, short-term parking. So, you know, 20, 30 minutes, what we did before. Is that clear enough for you, Mr. Proud, Mr. Hefkin?
Yeah, that's good.
I'll second that.
Mayor, there is no public un-- or ecomment, just for the record.
Okay, thank you, Eleanor. There's a motion on the floor in a second. I guess I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
And Councilmember MD?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. Anything else, Joe, from City Manager items?
No, nothing to add.
Last up, he warned discussion and consideration of resolution opposing California State Senate Bills 9 and 10 related to residential development, as these bills would preempt local regulations for housing. Probably needs very little explanation. It's, you know, what is this, round three, third year, fourth year, that Sacramento's just stripping us of control, stripping local control to, you know, determine how much housing development there is in Redondo Beach and where it is. As an example, SB 9 requires, basically requires, local cities to split single-family zoned units, single-family zoned lots into two lots ministerially. Doesn't go before hearing, doesn't do sequel. You live in a single-family lot, well, this goes through. Your new neighbor is not going to be one family, a couple, or one person, or whatever. It's going to be a developer who's going to convert it into maybe four units on a lot, even six units on a lot. So, yeah, you're in a single-family zoned area, bye-bye if this passes. So again, this is just round three or four, and then some more bills that hopefully we'll vote to oppose through these letters to various people, really. And, yeah, I think it's really upending so much of the planning we've been doing with our GPAC. It really just preempts local control and undoes all the work we've been doing to even meet our regional location. And by the way, this has nothing to do with affordable housing, right? There are no affordable housing requirements in this whatsoever. Just more market-grade housing. Anyway, hopefully people had a chance to read the letters. It's just getting to be the same old, same old. Councilmember MD?
This is beyond ridiculous. They are putting-- they're just, they're just putting, forcing this on to different towns that-- and they're not even considering what people have done prior. And the formulas, just increase it, it says just keep, just keep adding it by a percentage instead of looking at what has been done in that town, or considering density, or considering anything else about this. And they're just doing these blanket statements of changing the zoning from R1 to an R2 automatically, like you said. I just want to make sure people are hearing you, because what you said is exactly right, to change all R1 to R2 without any consideration, any consideration into how that affects that neighborhood and what the quality of life will be for those people. So I just want to make a motion that we write all these letters and maybe add a few exclamation points. I'm just kidding about that. I make a motion--
With the exclamation points.
I'll second that with the exclamation points.
Any public comment, Eleanor?
And also, to clarify, we've got a couple of resolutions. We've got a resolution--
All right, hold on, sorry, I didn't have it. I was busy looking at the pharmacies on the thing. I had them up beforehand.
Yeah, that's important. There are resolutions opposing SB 9 and SB 10, so--
Okay, so let me do it correctly. Hold on. All right, so I would like to adopt by title-only Resolution Number CC 2101-009. And then we have to do another motion for the next one, correct?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any public comment, Eleanor, on either of these?
No public comments, Mayor.
All right, there's a motion in a second. On that motion, I would add that going from R1 to R2, throw in the ADU regulations that the state has set down in junior ADUs as well, you could see go from like one on a lot to six on a lot, which really is just coming from the state, and they have stripped our control to manage that. If these-- Anyway, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
And Councilmember--
Aye.
Okay, so I'm going to read the first one, and then you're going to motion for the second one. First one, adopt by title-only Resolution Number CC-2101-009, a resolution of the City Council of City of Redondo Beach, California, opposing Senate Bill 9, Atkins, require ministerial approval of housing development containing two residential units and parcel map dividing a lot into two equal parts for residential use. Okay?
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt by title-only Resolution Number CC 2101-010, with the caveat, it's not about local control. It's about force-feeding the density into these cities with, from the state. And it's, you know, local control just assumes we have a choice on some of these things, and we don't, because of the density that we have. And we can put these things, we might be able to fit housing in where we can, but we're not going to be doing it by just doing a sweeping of eliminating certain zoning. It's just, it's beyond local control. It's force-feeding. It's faux gras.
Well, I would also argue that it's really the commoditization of California real estate, and it's coming from Sacramento. They're going to a centralized land use planning model where they don't really, they want to circumvent local regulations. The ECS is the enemy, and what you're going to see is California real estate, as happened in Vancouver when they passed similar laws, become really like banks for large institutional investors to invest in. And you will see a commoditization of real estate in places like Redondo Beach, and they will become investment vehicles and be sold in Wall Street. And that's where this is going, folks. And it's all being driven in Sacramento. Need to get to, especially State Senator Ben Allen, because he has gone along with a lot of these, and he could be a major force in Sacramento to come out against these. So, as well as State Assemblyman Al Merit Succi, but Al Merit Succi is going to introduce the bill soon. The models initiative that me and some others offered that makes zoning and land use municipal affairs. So I think Assemblymember Merit Succi is definitely on board with protecting local control, and I think Senator Allen is still kind of walking the fence. So I have to throw that in, encourage people to reach out to Senator Allen and ask him to stop these sorts of bills.
But Bill, they're not even planning. You're saying that they're doing planning from the state level. That's the problem. There's no plan or thought process into this. It's just a sweeping generalization of how everybody's got to go, and it's just, it's not okay. And I agree with all, everything else you say, but it's not really planning. And it's just, it's not okay. And I agree with all, everything else you say, but it's, it's not really planning. It's just it's just, it's just.
I, I would call it simplified central land use planning coming from Sacramento, simplified meaning they just think more supply is gonna bring down prices. And that's their plan. Just more means lower prices. They think that somehow real estate tracks supply and demand as if supply and demand is some sort of natural law like water boils at two hundred twelve degrees. It's not a natural law. It's just a theory. And it breaks down when it comes to real estate, especially residential real estate. If, if, if supply and demand, if real estate followed supply and demand, why in Sacramento, in San Francisco, we have the most densely populated area in the entire state by far, you also have the most expensive area in the state by far. So supply and demand breaks down when it comes to real estate, especially residential real estate. But they're not listening to that. They're listening to where their money comes from, and that's the trade unions and the Building Industry Association. And that's really, really the third house in Sacramento that's driving all this. And that's what the public needs to understand. And that's what they need to pass on to Senator Allen to look out for us, not for the trade unions and the building industry associations. That's really what's going on.
Yep. I'll second that motion.
All right, there's a motion in a second.
Phil, I want to comment as well, too. I have my hand up.
Yeah, hang on, I'm sorry. I've got to get back to that screen then. Councilmember Lowenstein.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, actually, you took the words out of my mouth. Look where the campaign contributions are for Tony Atkins and Scott Wiener coming from. Exactly. Go, go Google that. And you'll see exactly listed who their contributors are. But the other thing is, let's say that their plans come through and who honestly thinks that a million-dollar house will all of a sudden become a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house? Which for some people, where twenty percent down payment is a hundred thousand dollars, where a lot of people don't have that sitting through. How many people that have spent a million dollars on their home here are gonna be happy that their house went down to five-hundred-thousand dollars? This isn't like Texas where there's land everywhere. This is crazy. This is a crazy idea. And those of us who've studied economics even understand that that's not gonna work. It's just not gonna work. There's too many factors that are involved here. So, you know, the more and more I see this, the more angry I get that especially Scott Wiener is not listening to what people are saying. And he keeps kowtowing to, to the associations, the unions, to the builders, to everybody else. We need to put pressure on these people to stop coming back with Frankenstein bills because that's what's happening over and over again until we kill them. So anyway, I'm on board with everything you guys say on this. It's crazy.
Any public comment, Eleanor?
Uh, mayor, no, we have no Zoom or ecomments for this one.
There was a motion by Councilmember Indy, seconded by Councilmember Narrenheim, I believe. Do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narrenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Indy.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Adopt by title-only resolution number CC dash twenty-one oh one dash oh one oh. A resolution of City Council, Redondo Beach, California, opposing Senate Bill ten, Weiner, which would require ministerial approval of housing development containing ten units. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. And when they say ministerial, I mean, they're required to, if we say so. And they also circumvent SEQA. They're circumbitting, you know, an environmental quality act. Kind of interesting in the conflict with what is normally very strict rules and regulations when you're up zoning areas to study impacts. They don't even want you to have to study impacts. Anyway, on to mayor and council referrals to staff. Councilmember Narrenheim.
I have none of that. Thank you very much, sir.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, I would just make a referral related to our N1 conversation about animal licensing to ask staff and the city attorney's office to look into either bringing back an ordinance or amending an ordinance as it relates to animal licensing and rabies vaccinations.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's we'll take a vote. Councilmember Narrenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Excuse me, Councilmember. Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Indy.
Aye.
Okay.
And then the, the only other thing, it's I'm not sure if it's a referral, but just a request, I've already gotten complaints as it relates to two different parks or parkettes where we're allowing you know, dogs as part of our, you know, trial year process and people ignoring the posted rules. So if anybody else has has other ones, I'm gonna share mine with, with Joe and staff. But I, I just want to know so we can stay on top of this because it's clearly already getting out of control in some places. That's all.
Okay, Councilmember Grant.
Nothing, thank you.
And Councilmember Indy.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to bring up a letter that I refused, I received from the chairman of the Budget and Finance Commission. Subject, Budget and Finance Commission requests that the City Council view the refinancing CalPERS unfunded accrued liability with bonds presentation from our January fourteen, twenty twenty-one meeting. The Budget and Finance Commission received a presentation from Larry Cosmont and Dan Mascello from Cosmont Transaction Services. Well, basically, he'd ask us to receive the same presentation and discuss how we might fund our ongoing CalPERS liability, taking advantage of low interest rates, something the city of Manhattan Beach and Torrance have elected to do. So it seems like a good idea to ask staff, to ask them to come in and give this same presentation, given that we got a letter from them requesting us just to see the presentation.
I'll make a motion to, to do so, to bring that back.
And mayor councils, I could also add that this was an item that we brought to Budget and Finance. We were happy that they, you know, were open and receptive and sent you the letter. This makes sense for us to look at in the context of our, of our mid-year budget, which would be February sixteen. So if we could just sort of leave it, leave it with us, that we will bring it to you as part of the mid-year budget review. We can also have Cosmont in to do a presentation. That's not without cost to do that, but we do have the information that we can certainly share with you and put in as part of that report.
How much does it cost to have them give us a presentation?
Oh, I, I, you know, I don't know the specifics.
We actually need to do a new contract. Their contract for those type of services has expired. So we'll be doing that as quickly as we can, and that will determine how much it all will cost.
Well, it would be good if you, I mean, you came in and gave a presentation in Budget Finance. It seems you know, if it's five hundred dollars, well, then maybe, you know, or a thousand dollars, I would think there'd be some discretionary fund we could use to see the presentation. Can't believe we're talking about being able to pay for this presentation.
But we've got the presentation on video as well. I mean, the meeting was videotaped. I know that's not the same as having the opportunity to ask questions yourself, but I mean, that information is out and available.
Well, CNN, we're looking at a two hundred and eleven million dollar potential liability and save roughly fifty-three to ninety million dollars over twenty-five to thirty years, according to this letter. It might be worth being able to have them available to ask them questions. Seems prudent to me. So should we go ahead and make a motion to come back with a budget modification to pay for this presentation?
I'll, I'll make a motion to come back with a budget modification to get Larry Cosmont here to discuss the Budget and Finance letter and the contents regarding bonding at our mid-year discussion.
Okay, so he could come back in our first meeting then in February with a budget modification to pay for this presentation, Joe?
If, if that's necessary. I don't know the specific cost of this.
Well, it's kind of the question, because if it's necessary.
The contract becomes the first thing we have to do. And we, we have already started working with them to, to get that done. I, I believe, but we, we haven't, of course, worked it out that the cost will come from any bond proceeds if, if we do end up going down that route. The part I don't know is if we end up not going down the route, then how is it paid for?
Well, the part I don't understand is how he's able, we're able to fund him to give a presentation to the Budget and Finance Commission, but we're having this this, this jumping jacks to get him to give a presentation to the city council. So I'm kind of in favor of a motion to just go ahead and do a budget modification for five thousand dollars. And if that doesn't cover it, well, then we will look at the video. So, yeah, just come back, I guess. I don't know. Somebody make a motion to come back.
I'll, I'll make a motion for the next council meeting and come back with a budget modification for the first meeting in February to amend the Cosmont's contract to allow Larry Cosmont to come back and talk about the budget or the bonding item he talked about at the Budget Finance Commission so that we can talk about it at mid-year.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you.
I don't know how he got before Budget and Finance, not us.
All right, well, there's a motion on the floor in a second. Councilmember Narrenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Indy.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, could you come back with that? Like, I guess that would be the first meeting in February so that he could show up in the the mid-year budget meeting, Joe?
Sure, that's your motion.
Perfect. Great. All right, well, I guess that's it, folks, for tonight's meeting. Be back in a minute to make sure I don't miss anything. Yeah, our next meeting will reconvene Tuesday, February second. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Any objection? Okay, so ordered. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.